And call this meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Tuesday, December fifth for our afternoon session. And I will pass it to Clementine to do roll call vote and and share how folks can in the public can participate in in public comment.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on the agenda for this meeting, which is online at iSearchMonterey.org. Remote commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. The usual meeting broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty five is not available today due to technical issues. So please use Zoom or YouTube to observe or participate in our meeting. An email went out about this this morning as well. In the chamber, we recommend wearing masks and ask attendees to keep phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting, and thank you for participating in your city government.
And with that, we'll move on to presentations. The number one on the agenda is to recognize city employees for milestone anniversaries and retirements, and with that, I'll pass it to Hans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always a an agenda item that we are cherishing once every every quarter where we honor our employees who have milestone anniversaries, but also retirements. And today we have three employees in the audience and and one additional firefighter who retired up to twenty five years of service, and I understand that the firefighter is not in the audience today. But it's it's Rachel Dice, Thane Wilson, Martial Del Rosario, and Fred Pagan. And we we want to take a moment out of our busy day and give them ample time to to be mentioned and to be acknowledged. And Rachel, we start with Rachel. She is celebrating a twenty year anniversary of services. She is the recreation director, works in the parks and recreation department. Rachel is is a person who is always in on the front lines you see here at various events. If you have been to our drive through events held at the youth center during COVID, she was the person with a clipboard, standing at the beginning of the line and making sure that everyone who was signed up for the food bank donations every Monday got 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 their food distributed. And again, stay, keep in mind, this was during COVID times when we were all very much social distancing and she was out there helping everyone. But I I I stop here and I ask Karen Larson, our Parks and Recreation Director, to talk a bit more about Rachel because she knows her also for a considerable amount of time. And with that, I asked also Rachel to come forward and go ahead, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. Today, we're here recognizing Rachel Dice for over twenty years of service with the City of Monterey. And I've had the pleasure of knowing Rachel since she was a very young child, participating at Camp Kansabi and in swimming lessons. And in nineteen ninety five, she became a part time employee at Camp Kansabi and as a recreation leader and a camp counselor. Rachel assisted not only with camp, but also with all our school breaks and after school programs. In nine, in two thousand, she was promoted to Assistant Director of our summer programs for the playgrounds. Then she was the Director of Whispering Pines Day Camp for six years and an after school site director for three years. Rachel progressively expanded her knowledge and experience when she became a thirty hour RPT Recreation Specialist for both Ellis Dero Park Center and Recreation Summer Camps and Special Events in two thousand and three. She was then promoted to a full time Recreation Coordinator at Casanova Knoll, and she was sorry, in two thousand and seven. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
She supervised preschool programs, after school programs, especially special events and assortment of creative programs for both youth and teens alike. Rachel also is a part of our core team, as Hans mentioned, of the services that we delivered during COVID nineteen by assisting with all of our meal distributions and like five hundred families a week that she did. So she produced the produce distribution for five hundred families a week, meals on wheels, drive through for seniors and senior outreach and more. Rachel is essential to the ongoing rebuilding of Monterey Recreation Programs and Services post COVID. She has been the Recreation Coordinator for the Hilltop Park Center since twenty twenty and continues to assist with innovating programs and services for not only Hilltop Park Center, but for the entire recreation vision, including the Bunny Hop Photo Op, Halloween Movie Night and Trunk and Treat, as well as annual Thanksgiving and holiday meal kit distributions. Rachel has also been responsible for managing and coordinating our Rec Division's social media accounts for fourteen years. She's an integral part of the Parks and Recreation Department and is an example of how the department develops and retains excellent employees that provide superior programs and services for the community. So please join me in congratulating Rachel on this incredible milestone of twenty years of service for the City of Monterey.
Thank you.
Would would you like to share a few remarks?
I would say it hasn't always felt like work. We're like family, so it's a it's a been a blessing. Yeah, thank you, guys.
And.
Here.
But wait, there's more.
And of course, this twenty one karat gold plate. Your dad is in the audience, Dennis Dice. Dennis worked in parks for almost thirty years, yes, and at one time he was the longest servant park employee, I remember. Dennis was the guy who always fixed what is broken in the playgrounds. So I'm happy you are here. I'm happy your mom is here. Nice to see you. Your brother is here and I'm
Thank you.
almost happy that you are here and give you your twenty year thing, and if you lose it, I have another one.
And I make a comment. Maybe at the
Okay, the next, the next one, Mayor.
Yeah.
Is Thane Wilson. Thane also celebrates twenty years of service. Thane, I met Thane the first time when when the housing office was in the parking lot, where now the senior housing is on Van Buren Street. And he he came with a bonus because he had the sweetest golden retriever with him. I'm sorry to remind you of that, but that was quite always nice to go to the housing office and and play with the dog instead of working. So Thane has been working in our Housing Department, Housing Division for for many, many, many years. And he's well known around town, and I don't want to steal the thunder from Kim because Kim will say a few words. And with that, Thane, we are proud of you, twenty years, and Kim will will speak a few words about you.
Good afternoon. It's my delight to share and celebrate Thane Wilson's twentieth anniversary with the City of Monterey Housing Office. Thane's primary responsibility with the Housing Office has been our Qualified Household Housing Fix It Program. And that would be replacing water heaters. You know, anything broken in a home that's related to a health and safety issue for a qualified household. And I have a story I want to share with you. What happened this past year? We had a woman come to the Housing Office. She was confused. I'll just, she couldn't really sequence her thoughts. We knew that she wasn't feeling well. And Thane, as part of his job, said, let me go to your house, and she goes, I think something's wrong. And in fact, when he went out there, he could smell gas. He then immediately called PG&E and the gas service was turned off to the home. He then contacted her family who lived in Chicago. And the family was able to start to obtain medical services for this woman. And basically, her stove had been leaking gas. And then the next step was to actually, she qualified for our program. We were able to purchase the stove through the program and have it installed. Three weeks later, the same woman came back to our office crying, saying, you know, it's such a difference. She didn't know what was wrong, and she was she was being poisoned, if you will, by her home. And that's the type of work that Thane Wilson does on a daily basis in our community. And I want to extend my extreme thanks. It's more than just a new water heater. It's about helping house people stay in their homes as long as they can and have a quality of life in our community. And I don't know if we're going to be able to play a video. I just wanted one minute of, we have testimonials on our website where people have shared their experience with the Housing Rehab Program. And we'll see if it works because I just want you to see in one minute at least what one person's accounting was. It's always hard when I try to do something tricky, so we'll see if it works. If not, we'll assign you to do it at home.
The City of Monterey's Housing and Property Management Office is here to help Monterey residents stay in their homes and keep them safe. Housing rehabilitation grants and loans are available to low income residents and families.
I'm an artist from Missouri and I have been my whole life.
Carolyn lived in Chicago and Los Angeles before settling down in Monterey.
It has a good feeling to it of the past, and I have lived in LA and Santa Barbara.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not sure why the video cut off, but take a moment, look at it at home. She goes on to just share that she couldn't really step on her deck without, you know, without holes there. The windows were leaking and the person walking her into her home was, you know, arm in arm is Thane Wilson. So it's my extreme honor to recognize you. And thank you.
I just wanted to say just a quick word. It's Christmas. That's why I have this. I'm going to be Santa Claus at Christie's Washington Middle School in Salinas, so I'm doing that. I just want to say thank you to the city for allowing me to run this program and work with the elderly, mostly in the low income. They're a kind of a forgotten group. And I know it's hard for, it's hard for me to speak about it, but they're they're they they need help. If they can stay in their home as long as we can keep them in there safely, they know it better than any rest home they can go to to find a a place for a facility in the middle of the night and break a hip. They know they can walk around their homes in the dark. So my job is to keep them safe and do that, and I'm just doing my job. It wasn't for this man, though. He's been my support. And I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So the next next one, I was Fred Pagan. Fred was a building maintenance crafts worker, but he has worked in various jobs here in the City of Monterey. At the end, after almost twenty seven years, Fred retired, I believe, like two months ago, and and we all cried together in my office. And Fred is 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 one of those employees, when you strike up a conversation, you never know where it ends. Because Fred is is was our department's and our city's honorary philosopher. And the insights that that Fred shared with 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 me or with everyone who wanted to listen to him and the crews are good, are deep. And 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 so Fred is not just a person who can fix things or show you how to fix things. He's also a person who who shares his his life experiences and his insights with you. And with that, we are celebrating his retirement and our public works director Andrea Rennie will say a few words about Fred Pagan.
Thank you, and it's always bittersweet because we're so excited that someone is going to the next chapter of their lives and then just having enjoying retirement after being so long with the the city. But we do miss Fred, and I'd like to say a couple of things about Fred. So dedication is a word that really embodies friend. So he, over twenty seven years with the City of Monterey, he really has that public service mentality. He was hired as a part time maintenance worker in January nineteen ninety six, and then he became a full time custodian that same year. In nineteen ninety seven, he transferred to the Streets Division as a maintenance worker. And then in nineteen ninety nine, he became a building maintenance crafts worker until his retirement. So you can see that he's done quite a few different things in the city and touched different divisions. So Fred truly cares about all the people, and he really serves the Presidio folks. So he always performs at a very high level. He is amazing at different trades from carpentry to plumbing and just everything in between. His dedication shined through, and he took on so many challenges with a great smell and a great attitude. He always knew that he was going to make an immediate difference and an impact on the daily lives of the servicemen and women of the Presidio. He has a desire to make a real connection with the people around him, and he always took an interest on how his coworkers were doing. Fred has a true excitement for life, and he often talks about his latest trip to Alaska where he's helping a friend work on a fishing lodge. So he's got so many exciting stories and some very cool pictures. His caring personality and hard work are already missed.
It was a pleasure. You know, one of my coworkers said it's a dream job. You know, I worked around buildings all my life, and you know, while I was learning a trade, I also went to night school and became a certified building inspector. And that helped me kind of like look at certain things, especially codes and laws and everything. And it's it's been a pleasure. I had a couple of dreams about my coworkers since I've retired, and they've been good. Smiling, and I wish everybody well. That's what I want for myself, you know. And I wish I could live a long life. I'd still be here, but I I know that there's something else. And I don't know what it is, but you know, life has been good to me, and I don't have any reason to feel like something bad is going to happen. So I I wish I could go on working for the city. And you know, even though I'm a civilian, I would do anything for you guys. I love you all.
I love it. Thank you, Thane. Thank you.
So I I want to mention that Christie is here. She's the better half of Thane and makes Thane pain. And also we have Ann here, Ann Pagan, who has been also employee of the City of Monterey for many, many years. And I'm happy you both are here, and I know you have also a beautiful daughter who is very successful, and you always talk about her as well, Eleanor. And let's not forget her as well. So congratulations on your retirement and take Ann with you on the trips. Don't do it for yourself.
And where are you at? What what were you serving in the city? Awesome. Awesome. Well, thank you for everybody's service, and I appreciate Hans being able to create this moment for us to be able to recognize those milestones and the retirements. And so congratulations, sir, on your retirement. I'm going to open it up for public comments on this one before I bring it to the council. So I'll ask for folks in the chamber, if you are interested in speaking on this item, to either stand or raise your hand to be identified. And then for folks that are online on Zoom, if you can use the raise hand function, and we're going to capture everybody. So this is a good setup for the general public comments, too. This is the process that we follow now for council meetings. You have to identify yourself at the beginning of the public comment phase, and then we close the the time off for folks to be able to be added on later. So we have one person in the chamber that wishes to speak on the same. We have two people, and this is this is on the presentation that we just had on the anniversaries. So are you not in the anniversaries? Okay, anybody in the chamber wishing to make comment on the anniversaries presentation? Do we have anybody online? We have one person. All right, so we'll go ahead and do a countdown. Make sure we have everybody that wants to speak on this item to five, four, three, two, one, and we still have the one. All right, perfect. We'll take the one online.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is Esther Malkin, the current president of the Laguna Grande Neighborhood. And Fred Pagan is my neighbor. And I have been asking Fred when he was going to retire since I moved here about eleven years ago. And he just always had the energy to keep going and going. And when I saw him a couple of months ago and he said he was retired, I didn't believe him. So now I guess I can tell it's really true. Fred has been at some point also a board member of Laguna Grande Neighborhood Association. And I will tell you, he was one of the very first people that actually welcomed me to the neighborhood when I moved here. That was on the board. So I'm very happy to see that Fred is finally retiring and he can do all the Alaska travel that he wants and that he can enjoy his retirement after so much time and dedication that he's put into the city. So congratulations, Fred, and I look forward to seeing you around the neighborhood more now that you're not going to be working so much. All the best to you. Thanks.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council if anybody wishes to make any remarks. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, thank you. So many of you, I know through my days with working with the city. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for those who have had the the recognition of the time and grade that are still here and for those of you that are moving on to retirement, congratulations. As a former city employee, I want to remind you all that there's always a place to flunk retirement and serve in the the capacity that you choose. So congratulations. It is such a small world, and I just want to call out somebody I went to high school with. Rachel, your dad. Frank, how are you back there? Dennis, I'm sorry, Dennis, how you doing? I just want to say hi to Dennis, and I won't tell you what year it was, but Dennis and I were at high school in the same year together and just got to see him at the reunion. But I just wanted to say specifically that the Casanova Knoll has a special place. It's great that the firefighters are here today because they've always sponsored the movie night. Several years ago, we did the movie night, and Rachel was the go to person that made that successful with the firefighters and the Canary Road Rotary. So reaching out in the neighborhood. And just I just want to highlight for all of the folks that are mentioned here tonight that the impacts that they make in the community, the impacts that they make, not just as employees, but the relationships that go deep in the community and deep in their work groups is meaningful. And I think, you know, it just it just is a benchmark to say, when you find a career you know that fits you, you have a blast, and it isn't a lot of work to go to work. You love it. And I appreciate everything that you've done, and Ann, including you, thank you for all of your service through the years. And it was always a privilege to see all of you when I would run around and see you for the variety of tasks that I might have had. We look forward to seeing you in the community and your retirement and your travels. But God bless you all, and thank you. And for those of you who are still here working, God bless you too, and we hope to see you for many more years. Dennis, I saw your hand. Okay. Thank you, buddy. Good to see you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Well, I think on on behalf of the rest of the council, as you can see, we have a packed room tonight. We've got a lot to discuss, but it doesn't take away from the appreciation that we have. So thank you all for your service and thanks for being here today. And what a great opportunity to allow them to leave the chamber.
I wonder how come Dennis looks so much younger than me.
Yeah, you guys are about the same. You're good. All righty, as that transition transitions out, we're going to go to the general public comment. These are for items that are not on today's agenda. So if you want to speak on an item that's not on today's agenda, this is the time to identify yourself. If you're in the chamber or if you're online, if you're online, please use the raise hand function. I'm going to ask folks that are in the chamber if you wouldn't mind standing up and lining up over here to the left of the podium. And if there's anybody that is unable to stand and maybe wants to stay in the seat, if you could just raise your hand so I can identify you. And if there's anybody that um is unable to stand and it maybe wants to stay in the seat, if you could just raise your hand so I can identify you. So we have one in the front row. Anybody else? Is anybody behind Tom that may not see a hand? All right. And where's the end of the line at? Shay, Shay is the last person. All right. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak? I see Shay is the last person in line. Going once, going twice. All right, Shay, you're the per, you better end it good. No pressure. All right. And online, I'm going to do a countdown. Please use the raise hand function. I'm going to count down to five, four, three, two, one. We have two. And how many do we have in the chamber?
I see fourteen.
Fourteen, sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen, sixteen total.
Uh, so I, I'm open to extending the public comment period to forty-five minutes if the council is in agreement with that. I don't think it's going to take that long, but I think just make sure we give everybody enough ample time. What does that bring us to for every speaker?
That brings us to two minutes and forty-nine seconds.
Can we do it in two minutes and forty-nine seconds? Okay. Alrighty. Mr. Riley.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor and city staff. Um, I've been here three times before with a proposal to add a project to the city work plan of a committee to take, make changes to the Highway sixty-eight area plan. Uh, this is my fourth time here. Um, I'll give you to the first of January. If you guys have not started something officially, you're going to get something unofficially from my doing. The Highway sixty-eight area plan, it reflects it in, impacts in the future on firefighting. It impacts on a lot of the land use development. And those of you who were that at our neighborhood uh picnic in September, right across from the fence is the area I'm talking about. Tarpe flats. That area is over a hundred acres. That should be annexed to the city. I've talked to the owners informally. They want to annex to the city. It's an area for future development. We need the Highway sixty-eight area plan changed. You've got to the first of January to start something officially. If you hadn't, you're going to get something unofficially from me. So you're familiar with this. I gave you co- copies in writing what was proposed. Very simple. Eliminate the transportation restriction on annexing properties on the Salinas Highway corridor. Thank you very much.
My name is Chandler Roland. I'm a Marina resident. In the two thousand twenty-two annual report on the Surf Project MST states, it expects eight hundred and eighty thousand fewer local vehicle trips during the first year of operation when these eight hundred and eighty thousand passenger riders use the two, the new two bus lanes built between Marina and Seaside Transit Stations. However, the TMC executive director states that the eight hundred and eighty thousand passengers will mostly be non-owners of vehicles similar to the previous day riders using the Route twenty express line between the two stations. I tend to believe that TMC ex- executive director, director's theory regarding non-vehicle owners, but doubt there would be hundreds of thousands of local citizens, elderly students, employees, disabled riders available out of a county population of four hundred and sixty thousand citizens, including children. Once again, MST and TMC have attempted to confuse and mislead the Monterey citizens and city council members add to the project surf advantage versus the major environmental disruptions and the a hundred million dollar taxpayer funded cost. There are three other alternative routes recommended in regards to this program by the California Coastal Commission. Get, get Marina, Seaside and San City. Get them to know your concerns about this project.
Good afternoon. Steve Lightfoot of LennonMurderTruth.com. I've got a rally this Friday at noon downtown Monterey. And I'd like to talk about why it's important to care of Stephen King killed John Lennon, but first let me say citizens alert regarding Leon Panetta of Monterey, California politics and his efforts to have me killed. My hero status has attracted my enemies in the Monterey, Santa Cruz area and Leon Panetta is practically admitting lately that he is the one behind the dozens of police and court abuses I have endured since two thousand nineteen here. There are sections below in my website, LennonMurderTruth.com. I present my many court motions. Let me say here that Leon Panetta has proven himself to be a deranged sadist caught chuckling uncontrollably on sixty minutes decades ago while recounting his role in killing thousands of Iraqis. This before nine eleven. A former Nixon and later CIA chief, he is molesting Need the Messenger with almost a dozen police episodes in just three years' time involving six officers who lied on their efforts to hobble my activism. Leon Panetta has corrupted several officers, chief Ober, DA's Jeffrey Rosell and Gianni Pacioni. More than four judges and even a judge related to him who he has slated to oversee my upcoming appeal on a matter where my rights dis subpoena several officers and witnesses were denied twice. Anyway, I want to talk about my uh John Lennon murder rally. Stephen King, I've got him dead right and getting John Lennon's last autograph. Story of the century, folks, right there. I've got Mark David Chapman's name and letter to the editor linking himself to Reagan who's moving him into a hostile square with a gun. It's three weeks before the murder. The story of the century right there alone, folks. I've got Richard Nixon's book that talks about why we have to kill John Lennon. Sitting next to him and timing this week, the day of the murder under the headline, who's in, who's out? What could that mean? Reagan's in, Lennon's out, my first clue. Stephen King has never denied it. Meanwhile, I got Leon Panetta trying to kill me. And I've got KSEO Radio trying to wash me up with their good cop, bad cop game they play. The owner pretends to be defending me while he lets his co-host berate me and build the argument against his being nice to me. What they have done with me is given me three or four interviews. But they've never taken me seriously. They've couched me in a ridiculous light, like pity this guy. He believes these crazy things. We don't believe him. What you're up against is a CIA station KSEO keeping Santa Cruz obtuse, keeping Santa Cruz oppressed. I hate to criticize the owner for being Jewish, but damn it. They hate me more than anybody. They hated Christ. They hated John Lennon. They can be proved to be guilty of killing John Lennon, the Jews. That's right. John Lennon. And now they're trying to wash me up. But what are they jealous of smart people? Thank you. December eighth tomorrow, I mean, uh, Friday at downtown Monterey, folks.
Hello, council. My name is John Rico. After the city entered default in my case, I've received two phone calls from an attorney, William Price, who claims to be representing the city of Monterey in my matter. I'd like to confirm that the city council knows its status of default and that Mr. Price has been retained by the council in this matter. Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, mayor, members of council, city staff. My name is Ross Pounds. I'm the president of the Monterey Firefighters Association. I represent the seventy-one members of the Monterey Fire Department that are your firefighters and uh we passionately serve this community. Uh, at the beginning of November, uh, our membership made it clear to us that uh they wanted to uh make things better. And uh one way that uh we went about that is we had a vote of no confidence in our chief and we conducted that vote and even before that vote and throughout and, and even now and today, we've had uh multiple discussions with members of council, with uh city manager Usar. And I want to thank you for that. The dialogue has been excellent. It's been great to be heard. And it's been just great to have that dialogue. So with that, I'm going to start reading the resolution and then um whatever I don't finish, we'll, we'll follow up with, with uh Neil Hurd. Whereas this vote of no confidence is an alternative method to bring forth serious concerns of public safety and mismanagement while still promoting the uninterrupted and dedicated service as such services are vital to the welfare and public safety of the residents and visitors of the Monterey Peninsula. And whereas Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer has failed to effectively communicate the needs of the fire department to the Monterey City Council, city manager and contractual agencies resulting in deficiencies, including but not limited to those contained in this resolution which have negatively impacted emergency service delivery, risk, public safety and the health and safety of the dedicated men and women of local three seven oh seven. And whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the Monterey Fire Department has failed to adopt an effective training program. After the creation of a division chief training position in August of two thousand twenty-two, only one department-wide manipulative training exercise has been initiated by the Training Division. Instead, training has been left to self-motivated line personnel. This has resulted in inconsistent training standards and varying levels of emergency preparedness jeopardizing the safety of the public and line personnel. And whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the Fire Department has failed to provide standardized training and support in preparation for promotional tests. And whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the Fire Department has failed to conduct formal after-action reviews after major incidents and serious injuries to firefighters. And whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the Fire Department has failed to provide timely, critical incident stress management, showing blatant disregard for the mental health of its personnel. And whereas under the leadership of Chief Gaudens Panholzer and environment plagued by cronyism and toxicity has been allowed to take hold wherein personnel are wary of harassment, retaliation and intimidation by administrative staff. On numerous occasions, the highest scoring promotional candidate has been passed over uh for other lower-ranked candidates. Hello, members. Uh, Neil Hurd, going on eighteen years with City of Monterey Fire. I just want to say before I start reading this, this is the worst morale I've seen in eighteen years. The lowest we've been in training, the worst trained I've been and uh it's time to end that. Whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the Fire Department uh has lost a significant number of highly talented individuals to other agencies due to frustration with continued deficiencies within the Fire Department. Whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the lack of strategic planning and failure to continue the previous regional response model have resulted in insufficient temporary solution that slows response times to the areas adjacent to the Monterey Regional Airport uh with no known uh remediate plan. Uh, under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, the MFD failed to renew its decades-long contract with service for, with the Defense Language Institute of Monterey. Whereas under the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer, communication between command staff and line personnel has deteriorated. On separate occasions, command staff failed to inform personnel of scheduled dispatch communication outages, thus delaying emergency response, risking public safety and putting our members' safety in jeopardy. And under the leadership of Chief Panholzer, the Fire Department has failed to implement an adequate apparatus replacement plan for the city of Monterey and contractual agencies. As a result, the Fire Department personnel routinely respond to emergencies on a ladder truck with no, in, with an inoperable aerial ladder and on fire engines with substandard fire pumps, hose and equipment. These engines has unexpectedly shut down or malfunction during structure fires and have ongoing mechanical issue, issues risking both public safety uh firefighters. Uh, under Chief Panholzer, we've been ordered to drive fire department vehicles uh after the vehicles were deemed to be unsafe by their operators. Under lead, leadership of Chief Panholzer, um, Fire Department command staff obeyed operational decisions that put the safety of both public and line personnel at risk, violate our MOU between the city of Monterey and the Firefighters Association. Uh, under the lea- leadership of Chief Panholzer, fire station maintenance has been deferred, leading to conditions including mold, sewage leaks, a leaking roof uh and a fire department training tower red-tagged for structural instability. Under Fire Chief Panholzer, uh, he's refused to take ownership on a multitude of shortcomings in the Fire Department by consistently passing the blame to respective city managers. Therefore, it be resolved that the members of Monterey Firefighters thirty-seven oh seven declare they have no confidence in the leadership of Fire Chief Gaudens Panholzer. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Uslar. My name is Dave Mira. I've been with the Fire Department for the last eleven years. For years now, the Monterey Fire Department has watched its operational capacity steadily decline under the failed leadership of Chief Panholzer and his command staff. In tandem with this operational decline, a precipitous drop in employee morale has also manifested. Day after day, the men and women of the Monterey Fire Department show up to work and are forced to overcome countless preventable hardships ranging from lack of consistent, realistic department-wide training to broken, unreliable and unsafe fire apparatus. Fire apparatus that fail at structure fires, aerial apparatus without functional ladders, engines with failing suspension that can't even be driven in a straight line, and the list goes on. All along the way, those of us at the operational level have documented and voiced our concerns and observations and offered our help in finding solutions. Line personnel have burned countless hours finding solutions to many of the problems we face, only to be stonewalled by our command staff's apathy and unwillingness to address the critical issues. Another blatant failing point is the command staff's failure to facilitate the appropriate mental health processes for our employees after critical incidents. Twice in the last twelve months, we have had employees suffer life-altering injuries in the line of duty. And both times, the command staff completely botched the processes designed to protect the mental health of those involved. The same has proven true after several other critical incident responses by our personnel that has resulted in those employees enduring unnecessary suffering. The inaction by our chief and those directly under his command on all of the above has sent a clear message that the health and well-being of their employees is not a priority. Occasional kind words are great, but they do not excuse the incompetence enough. MFD deserves better. The leadership of the city deserves better. And most importantly, the communities that rely on us deserve better. They deserve a well-equipped and well-trained fire department. So when is enough enough? Hans, I believe you are well aware of the seriousness of the failings of the Fire Department's leadership. So for you to make public comments suggesting that our vote of no confidence in our fire chief is in some way born out of our position in negotiations right now is deeply insulting to all of us, your employees, and a disservice to the communities who rely on us. It demonstrates a lack of understanding of the quality of the people that work for you. So I challenge you to do what our fire chief never did and come get to know us. Do a ride along, have coffee with us, watch us train, see what we do and how we do it. See the quality of the people we have and I don't think you'll be so quick to throw us under the bus when standing in front of the cameras. You're capable of better, so do better. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and city council members for allowing me to speak today. I'm here on behalf of my husband, Raul Pantoja. He's worked for the Monterey Fire Department since two thousand or twenty-twelve. Since being hired, he has found a passion for serving the Monterey community and has started countless free community events along with organizing a mental health workshop for first responders and military members. Raul has been a dedicated, Raul has been dedicated to being an active member of the Monterey Fire Department family. Unfortunately, the Fire Department management has not been dedicated to providing safe working conditions or providing support to my husband or other firefighters, especially in the most dire situations. I've seen them fail to provide mental health support to Monterey firefighters time and time again, and it has not changed. Last two months have been some of the hardest time of my life. As a wife of a firefighter, I understand that there are risks to his job and over the last sixteen years of our marriage, I've mentally prepared myself in case I get the call that he was injured on site of an emergency. What I've not prepared myself for is my husband having a near-death incident, having a traumatic brain injury and losing his entire memory. All because the Fire Department management's decision to assign a task beyond a firefighter's job requirement merely to cut costs instead of hiring a professional licensed demolition crew, disgusted by the lack of care and support that they offer to their firefighters during the time it is needed most. I've recently read a quote from Hans Uslers from KION saying that if there are critical incidences where people get hurt, then there are counselors at their fingertips. What happened to Raul isn't a critical incident. I don't know what is. It's been over two months since he was injured and not once has he or I been contacted by MFD management to even see if he's okay. It's my understanding that after an incident such as his, there's supposed to be an on-scene peer support or a mental health professional available to check on the well-being of the um, of the on-scene brothers and sisters of the Fire Department. That was not done. Then they're supposed to offer a diffusion or diffusing of the incident within a few hours. That was not done. Then within twenty-four to seventy-two hours, a debriefing was supposed to be done. That was not done, not until six days later, after having no one made available to help support those dedicated firefighters was that offered. And to this day, not one of those services have been offered to my husband. We have been abandoned and left to fight and figure it out alone. Me, who's not an employee of the Monterey Fire Department, had to figure out the inner workings of the department. I had to plead to a worker's comp doctor for a therapist for my husband because of the trauma he's experienced and still took a and still took a month for him to get him seen. Where is the "at-your-fingertip" counseling? I know for a fact that we are not the only family that has been in the position for nothing. We are not the only families that have been in this position, and if nothing changes...
Hi, my name is Zoe Carter, and I'm a resident of Monterey. I have had the privilege of knowing the firefighters for the last four years, having been on my first ride-along with them exactly two and a half weeks before the COVID pandemic shutdown. I have seen firsthand the dilapidation of their apparatus. Turn signal broke in the engine I was riding along while we were there. They have had issues with their engines, having their headlights go off in the middle of the night and having to find a way to get home without headlights. Interesting that I find myself between Colleen and Pete Coleman, who Raul was at the bottom of the ladder when I had the chance to climb to the top of the ladder, and Pete came up behind me to make sure I was okay. So I just think that we need to do better for our firefighters. I volunteered at their numerous events. I do the pancake batter in the kitchen for the Fourth of July breakfast, which is one of our most successful events in the city. And I think we need to do better for them, take care of them, and what's happening to our injured firefighters is unacceptable. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Pete Coleman, I've been here 19 years on Valentine's Day. I think applying the word "leadership" to the two people we have in the office is an absolute travesty to the word "leadership." There's a complete vacuum of any leadership. The two in the office have done nothing but alienate and try to intimidate, which is not going to work with most of us. They go by a fear-based leadership, if you want to call it that. They have administration like battalion chiefs scared of their own shadow. There's nothing going on for them. There's no training. The training chief is basically an assistant to the assistant chief, like a lapdog. There's been nothing handled grievances. I work in a station that has leaks in the roof. We hear a bunch of promises from everybody and how, oh, we're important. We love the firefighters. We don't get anything. We're supposed to thank you for buying rigs to do our job? That's an absolute joke, and you said it on video. You don't make fleet. Thank you for buying stuff. Why would we have to thank you? That ladder truck is a symbol of an organized, functional city, right? Do you know what it's like to lay in bed at night, wondering if there's going to be a call where you need to use the aerial? Are you going to stop the scene and say, oh, hold on, the mechanic's working on it? And, you know, there's a budget we have to work through. We work on a truck that Santa Clara threw away and let sit in a parking lot for three years, rotting. And we bought it from them. That's the truck we're working on right now. That should be embarrassing to all of you. I'm asking you guys to do better. There is no plan for station maintenance. There's no plan for station replacement. There's two stations that are 70-plus years old. There's a station that's 100 years old in Carmel that looks a lot nicer than anything we have. Station 2 is literally falling down the hill. We don't hear a plan about 68 corridor being served eight hours a day out of a trailer. You guys should all be embarrassed over that plan. It's not a plan at all. There's no plan for training. We lost our training tower. The thing that Raul got hurt, taken apart, we built on duty with very little help from admin or anything. Just, you know, we built it on duty, the people that can weld and kind of melt metal together. There's also, there's just, there's no plan for anything in the future, it seems like. We're just kind of left to fend for ourselves. We hear a bunch of lip service about how important city employees are, and we go over there and you get treated like a second-class citizen. We had a sewage leak in the station during COVID. Everyone reminded us to wear these stupid little masks. No one talked about the mastic that we walked through for six months. That's the adhesive that was exposed. It's carcinogen. Or the carpet that we had to take out, or the shop fact that sucked up sewage that we couldn't replace. Everyone in this room should be embarrassed about how the Fire Department is, and the fact that those two cowards aren't in this room is very indicative of what we had to deal with, with Gaudens as a chief. So sorry for the emotion, but man, I'm pissed.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Wilkins. I'm a 31-year veteran of the Monterey Fire Department. Division Chief Stuart Roth, who retired in 2017, wanted to attend tonight's meeting, but unfortunately, he is out of town. I've been asked to present this letter by Chief Roth. He goes on to say, Dear Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager Uslar, my name is Stuart Roth. I have the great fortune of working for the City of Monterey, specifically the Monterey Fire Department, for over 34 years. During my 34 years, I had the opportunity to watch a lot of changes in the city, the city government, and the Fire Department. In the late 1980s, the Monterey Fire Department took a vote of no confidence to then-Fire Chief Anthony Fink. It was the first time in the history of the Fire Department and the City of Monterey that had ever happened. The vote was almost unanimous, and it dealt with the same issues that we see today. Lack of leadership, loss of trust in the Fire Chief, and the desire to change. Flash forward to today, and the vote of no confidence and the vote of no confidence taken by the union represents the same issues and more. These issues and concerns should have never been a surprise because they were identified in a letter that I wrote to then-city manager Mike McCarthy and Assistant Chief, Assistant Manager, sorry, Assistant City Manager Hans Uslar in 2017 that basically identified the same issues of poor leadership, poor work environment, lack of trust, and concerns about safety. This vote of no confidence was not something that happened overnight. I've had a unique opportunity as a Monterey Fire Division Chief to travel all over the country, working with Fire Departments and teaching leadership and command. What I learned from all of those years of traveling throughout the United States is that the Monterey Fire Department is loaded with exceptional talent, young, capable leaders, and fresh ideas that can take the Fire Department and the City of Monterey into the future. These men and women are extremely dedicated to the cause, to serving the City of Monterey and their contractual partners without prejudice and doubt or doubt. These personnel deserve the best leadership possible that is demonstrated every day by the top and is celebrated in every effort. For that reason, I wrote this letter, and I hope that you will acknowledge and act on the urgency for which I dissent. Monterey Fire Department personnel have given the chief a vote of no confidence. Additionally, they do not trust the assistant chief. And therefore, I hope that you will take swift action to remove the Fire Chief and find someone that can start healing the organization, build the morale back, inspire the young leaders to step up and start leading, solidify our relationships and contracts with our partnering agencies, and help find the future of the Monterey Fire Department. With respect, Stuart Roth, Fire Division Chief, retired, 1983 to 2017, W.E. Parker Award recipient, Monterey County Firefighter of the Year recipient, California State Training Officer of the Year recipient. I'd like to say from Robert Wilkins, I've been here 31 years. I've never seen our department so low in the morale in the toilet. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Corey McVay. I'm a nine-year member of Monterey Fire Department, and I'm reading a letter on behalf of Captain Bobby Flood, a 24-year member of the department. Having a working truck company in the City of Monterey is of utmost importance to the citizens we serve. It is the only apparatus in our system that can provide aerial ladder rescue, aerial rope rescue, and an elevated master stream at large fires. It also has specialized rescue equipment that is only found on that unit. The City of Monterey owns 200-foot ladder trucks, a primary first-out and a reserve. I'm writing today to express my deepest concern and frustration with the state of our aerial ladder trucks. Our first truck, a 2008, has not had a working aerial ladder since 2022. That means we have been on a 1998, a 25-year-old ladder truck for a year. This truck is long past its service life. On a daily basis, there are operating systems, features, and warning lights that do not work. We are forced to decide what we can live with and what will take us out of service. We have spent a great amount of time diagnosing and attempting to make repairs in the station just to keep this valuable resource on the road. On multiple occasions, my crew and I have spent hours at the city maintenance yard assisting the understaffed mechanics with the repairs. So this is your ladder truck. It's your truck today. It was your ladder truck last month. It was your ladder truck this whole last year. When our efforts fail and we are forced to go out of service, we do our best to outfit an engine or a brush truck in place of the ladder truck. This happens on a regular basis, which greatly reduces our capabilities. Aside from not having an aerial ladder, an engine has less than half the compartment storage of a truck, meaning that we have to choose which tools and equipment we can take and what is left behind. The most challenging auto extrication of my career came when we had an engine in service because the ladder truck was again broken down. The lack of equipment undoubtedly caused a delay in patient removal. We will always strive to provide the highest level of service to our citizens and community. We will overcome any obstacles to complete the task at hand, but it is becoming increasingly difficult with the tools provided. I implore the city to fix our first-out ladder truck. Our new truck is on order, but it's still two years from arriving. I fear an aging reserve truck will not make it that long. All of the above concerns have been discussed through my chain of command during officer and operations committee meetings with the Fire Chief. The answer always comes back the same. There's nothing I can do. It's out of my hands. We cannot allow this past practice to continue. We are gambling with people's safety on an all-too-opted basis. Thank you, Captain Bobby Flood.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Staff, my name is Philip Bezuska, and I'm Vice President of the Monterey Firefighters Association. In his public response to our firefighters' vote of no confidence, City Manager Hans Uslar seemed to deflect attention away from operational issues in the Fire Department by insinuating that firefighters are disgruntled by contract negotiations. We are extremely disappointed that the City Manager has conflated these issues. Contract negotiations for salary and benefits is a completely separate topic addressed through collective bargaining. Current negotiations reached impasse in March of 2023 when we were unable to come to an agreement. Since then, we have been patiently waiting on the availability of an independent arbitrator. While Hans has repeatedly claimed that negotiations have been contentious, our firefighters are very much at peace, knowing that an independent arbitrator will soon adjudicate a fair contract. We encourage the council, city manager, and the public to read our association's no-confidence resolution in its entirety. The document was read before you today, and it is available on our website, montereyfirefighters.org. Not a single one of the resolution's 15 points concern salary and benefits. Instead, it raises issues including Fire Department leadership, safety, communication, training, and strategic planning. Everyone who has spoken today spoke on issues that strike passion in their heart. Their passion represents a common desire to be better firefighters, paramedics, public servants, and representatives of the City of Monterey. We have great faith in your governance, and we hope that the city recognizes our cause for concern. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Shay Ballisteri. I'm the gym chairman for the General Employees Union of Monterey, and I just wanted to come and show our support for the firefighters. Gym supports them. And I just I don't have a prepared statement, and typically I just go off the cuff, but in terms of leadership and management, if you have management that can identify the real source of the problem, and if that problem, you believe, is simply just a financial negotiation and everything else is hyperbole, then I don't know what to say about that, but you have to take that in perspective as to what it is you believe those priorities are. Is it money? Or is it the fact that they want functioning equipment? If you choose management's position, we'll just give them a higher paycheck. But if you think they need new vehicles, then maybe you should listen to them because it doesn't sound like, you know, they're asking for too much besides functioning equipment and a leadership that they can follow. And Gym Shop suffers from the same kind of situation. And I hope you support the firefighters. They deserve it. Thank you.
And we have one online comment. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Shanahan, and I would like to talk to you about some issues that could create liability for the city. When I started working for the city in December, I brought over 25 years of risk management experience to the city. I have listened to the council meetings, and I was happy to hear city leadership acknowledge that actions taken now can impact future generations of Monterey residents. When working through some contract management issues, a different mentality seemed to prevail, one of pushing contracts through without required insurance documents. My initial review revealed that while contract templates with recommended insurance requirements were in place, the city was not actually collecting those insurance documents. I shared this information, and city staff agreed that we needed to move in the direction of compliance. However, some city leaders were not open to the requirements and stated they were stopping the work. I was instructed to keep doing what I was doing. In July, my director advised me that she was going to insist on a compromise with the city manager and city attorney. No direction on a change in process was identified. On October 8th, our insurance broker spoke with departmental leaders and reemphasized why the insurance requirements in our contracts are so important. Again, no changes in process were identified. At three Excel meetings, the topic was discussed with other risk managers and liability insurance experts. Each time, these discussions affirmed that my recommendations adhered to best practices and would provide protection against future liability claims. On November 14th, I was released from my probationary status with no reason given after 11 months of service. In fact, the quality of my work was complimented. At my five-month evaluation, my director stated I was a good hire. We know that there is a labor shortage, and it's very difficult to find and keep qualified local candidates. Risk managers are a role that has limited candidates similar to engineers. Considering the time and expenses involved in hiring and onboarding new employees, releasing an experienced local candidate for no reason does not seem like a good option. By releasing me, the city is not in compliance with the Excel bylaws, which require a full-time risk manager. As there was no reason given for my release and the validity of my suggested practices to improve the city's liability situation were substantiated by industry experts, I am requesting that I be reinstated to the role of risk manager and that communication from city leadership improves. If you would like to hear specific examples, I would be happy to share them with you. Thank you.
There are no further comments on Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for everybody for your public comments. We're going to refrain from engaging in a dialogue on those items because they're not agendized, but I appreciate everybody being here today to express these really critical issues and the importance of us trying to figure this out. So with that, I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consent. And I don't have any items to pull. Does anybody in the council wish to pull an item on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I would pull three in order that I can vote a different way.
Okay. Anything else in the council? Let's go out to the public. This is an opportunity to request items to be pulled, or if you have any general comments to make about items on the consent agenda. So looking at in the chamber, anybody wishing to make comments on the consent agenda? Let's see, let's check online. All right, I'll do a countdown real quick just to give everybody another minute here. Five, four, three, two, one. Did you have a comment you wanted to make? On the consent agenda? Item number two? What? So there is a cannabis item on the consent, but there's also cannabis in the evening session that we'll be talking about about the application process and the selection process. So that will be this evening at 7 o'clock. But there is also an item on consent, if I remember correctly, which is which is the second reading of the ordinance. So would you want to make a comment on this one? You'll wait till this evening? Okay. All right, last shot. Anybody want to make a comment on consent? And we don't have anybody on Zoom. All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. I'll entertain a motion for items minus item number three.
So moved.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll take up item number three. Do you need a staff report?
No, I do not.
Okay, let's stick it out to the public. Anybody in the chamber wish to make a comment on item number three? Which is the second reading of an ordinance to amend Monterey City Code Section 19-103, the schedule for fees and service charges to fully recover the costs of administering the Cannabis Business Ordinance and Rental Inventory Ordinance. Anybody online? All right, I'll do a countdown real quick just to give everybody another second here. Five, four, three, two, one. We still have nobody. Nobody's in the chamber. Bring it back to the council for a vote.
A motion to approve item three.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes for one. We'll move on to the public hearing. Items number nine, extending Urgency Ordinance 3673, the suspension of the Mills Act Property Tax Reduction Sentiment Program for historic zone properties for 10 months and 15 days. I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is a very mechanical item. We created an urgency created an urgency ordinance, I think it was in the meeting two weeks ago, and the rules require us to extend it appropriately so that it will be in effect for an additional ten months and fifteen days. And then we have to have a new solution in place or we revert to the old resolution as well. So with that, Kim has one-minute agenda report for you verbally.
I think our city manager summarized it well. We're asking for an extension for ten months and I believe fifteen days. Just a reminder, the Mills Act program is a voluntary program that cities can adopt. Ours has been around since about nineteen ninety-nine. We think we need to refresh it. Just in terms of, you know, it, the program offers a greatly reduced property tax to owners of historic buildings that enter into this contract. They're recognizing somewhere between forty to sixty percent savings. We've recently observed an increase in Mills Act requests. Sometimes the real estate transactions are monetizing the savings into the actual real estate contract. We think we need to look at that in more detail. And with that, we're recommending it be extended for ten months and I think fifteen days so we can complete our research and report back to you.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation, Kim. Questions from the council? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, question, and maybe this is a desire for the research. It'd be interesting to know, I'd say in the last five years, examples of what we have approved, what has been applied for that we did not approve, and where that happens to align with the sales record of that property. So just the historical, what's happened since it was approved and to just attract some of the inventory that's out there. That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Any questions? All right, let's take it out to the public. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? I asked for folks online to use the raise hand function and I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have no takers, nobody in the chamber, so we'll bring it back to the council for a motion and deliberation.
I'll make a motion to approve and suspend the action on Mills until we get a report back from the city staff.
Ten months, fifteen days. All right, is there a second? All right, motioned and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I didn't support the original item before and I'm not going to support this one. I just am not convinced of the need for urgency.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, do a vote. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion passes for one. With that, we will go to our public appearance. Item number ten. Measure P and S annual report. We'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is our annual report where we are dutifully reporting back how we are spending measure P and measure S money, measure P and measure S where tax measures approved overwhelmingly by our constituents, by our residents, and our finance director, Rafaela King, will present.
Good evening, council member, mayor. And I want to share just our findings for the measure P and S Oversight Committee regarding getting a street infrastructure and rehabilitation. The next slide. Okay, so for the audience, I just want to go with some background just to provide a little history on how and why measure P came about. So prior to twenty fourteen, the condition of the Monterey cities, the streets and sidewalks, roadway infrastructure was declining due to the dwindling funding sources. So the city needed a new funding source to address the deferred maintenance. In November twenty thousand, two thousand fourteen, seventy-four percent of the Monterey voters approved measure P, a one percent sales stack effective that was effective April first, twenty fifteen through March thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Next slide. In November of twenty eighteen, eighty-two percent of the voters approved measure S, the continuation of measure P, which was effective April first, twenty nineteen through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. In addition to providing the funding, the measure requires the creation of a citizens oversight committee that would meet periodically to prove, review measure P and S expenditures. The Oversight Committee has met regularly with city staff and has prepared the following report for July one, twenty twenty-two through June, twenty twenty-three, the fiscal year. Okay, so we have a comparison here for fiscal years from inception, actually, from fifteen. We started fiscal year fifteen through eighteen is all lumped together in the first column. And so we have it by eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two in our last year, twenty-two, twenty-three. So the revenue from inception, including the interest, is eighty-two point two million. The expenses are sixty-four point four million and it's leaving a fund balance as of six thirty, twenty-three of seventeen point seven million. For the twenty-two, twenty-three year, the farm total revenue was eight point seven million and expenses were eight point five, which resulted in a change in fund balance of about two hundred thousand. So a year-over-year comparison. The slide shows that the changes from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two fiscal years are compared to the twenty twenty-three fiscal year and those areas where funds were spent. And as you can see, there was an increase in revenues. The tax by three hundred fifty-one thousand and interest hundred sixty thousand. The total five hundred and eleven thousand increased from the prior year. And there is also a decrease in expenditures from, but the projects are still continued. And then there's a comprehensive list of details and locations that are reviewed in your packages that were attachments. Just kind of pointing out the expenditures, storm drains, we've spent since inception. Lord, I can't see. Well, for this fiscal year, we spent three hundred seventy-five thousand for the storm drains. There's a million spent on sidewalks, two point three million on pavements and ADA six hundred and seven thousand. So there's a total of four point three million that was spent in expenditures on these projects for this year. And now we have an executive dashboard that I'm going to have Andrew come and speak on.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is just a quick snapshot of where we're at with our pavement management program. The little infographics are help or used to help demonstrate where we're at. So if you look all the way to the right, there's a little blue odometer that says PCI seventy, seventy-one. That's a pavement condition index score, a hundred would represent perfect pavement, brand new, and zero would be a gravel road essentially. It shows we're right now at a seventy-one. When measure P was first passed, I believe we were in the fifties, so we've made great strides in the past few years. And if you look all the way to the left, there's a little blue flow chart showing year-over-year. You can see there's a gradual improvement. There's a general trend. It holds steady some years. Even though we're making investments year-over-year, we're always fighting time. Our roads are continuing to deteriorate. So as we make improvements, our roads are actually slowly sliding into disrepair. So even as we make these investments, some years we just managed to hold steady. But this is just a little snapshot of where we're at. We have a lot more projects queued up for this next year, so expect road delays, but that also means you're getting your roads repaired. And yeah, if you have any questions at the end of the presentation, I'd be happy to answer them.
So I'll consumer half his hand go up first, so.
Yeah, so you know, obviously we're generating, you know, ten to twelve million a year and doing lots of good things with that. I guess my question is, in twenty twenty-seven, when this measure sunsets, like, how much do you foresee we would need to sort of just maintain where we're at at that time? You know, again, understanding that roads constantly decline and need repair, but do we have a sense of how much it would take to just sort of maintain at that point?
So I don't have a real precise number for you now. I should mention we're in the middle of updating our model and doing a a new network assessment to gauge where we're at. So once we have all those inputs to our model, we'll have a better idea year-over-year what our maintenance strategy is going to be. In some years, it could be more expensive than others because we have, you know, different types of roads. Those concrete roads are going to be harder and more expensive to repair. Love our AC roads are a little bit more straightforward. So I can, we can maybe give you a little bit of an average or a range once we've finished our network assessment. But right now we're recalibrating this model.
Okay, so I'd look forward to seeing that in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes, so a quick question about the remaining service life. So I noticed that is kind of going toward the, the, the more worn part of it. So how does that play into the remaining time that we have and how we plan to address it?
So the remaining service life, my understanding is past practice has been, we didn't really take that too much into prioritizing projects. The promise with measure P and S has been we're going to touch every street. And that was regardless of the remaining service life. So that's an important metric, but it didn't play into how we prioritize or select our projects. I think the the promise that was made was that we're going to touch every street once. I believe the strategy is we started with a lot of the easy streets. Now we have some of the hard streets left. But the remaining service life, I don't think was an input in how we prioritize projects.
So what are our plans about the remaining service life and how to address that going forward? Do we know that right now?
So with each project, some of the harder ones that are a little bit more complicated, we're doing a kind of a real pavement assessment with geotechnical report to understand what the right treatment is going to be for those roads. And once we have the right treatment selected, it'll get programmed to a CIP project and put out to design, then out to bid. So the the remaining service life, it hasn't been an input in how projects are prioritized, but it is an important metric for us to gauge what level of repair the roads are in.
And and also help us understand remaining service life is not a separate set of streets. So this is just another way of looking at the existing road system.
Yeah.
And categorizing that, so.
Yes, yes, I understand that. I just wanted to, I mean, just looking at that being more proactive, I was just looking and wondering what our plans were at the city and how we address the RSL. That's just curious.
Sorry, if I may, under our running public works director, good evening. So what we did in the beginning is we did say that we were going to wait and have some of the worst ones done last. So what happens is sometimes when you have streets that need complete reconstruction, those are typically very, very expensive. And what we try to do in the very beginning is we try to do things like slurry and cheaper treatments to some of the streets so that we could expand that service life. So now we're looking at some of the really expensive ones, which are the concrete streets and some of the road rehab, like we did on Van Buren, where basically we reconstruct the entire street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, what's the difference between the pavement area square miles? I'm sorry, the difference between the center line miles and lane miles?
Sure.
What's the difference between those two?
Good question. So not all roads are equal. Some are, you know, four, six-lane arterial roads. So we measure pavement in different ways. Some of it is by center line miles, which is just, it's, it doesn't matter if you have a four-lane, six-lane or a two-lane road, we just measure the linear miles. If you have, you know, a four-lane road, you might have more center line miles, so apply a multiplier of four to that if it was a single-lane road versus a four-lane road. So just different ways of measuring it, the variable would be your width or number of lanes.
Okay, so another way to to look at this, the center line miles, you're saying that we have a hundred and two miles of roadway in the city of Monterey.
Correct.
Roughly.
As measured from the center line.
Yeah, from the start to finish. So if I took and traveled a hundred and two miles and did that and say it took me four hours, theoretically, if I drove a hundred and two miles, I would be driving on every street from start to finish in the city of Monterey.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Andrew. I think my question is for Rafaela. I'd like to see if I can get a little bit more understanding on the, on the numbers and I'm pretty bad with numbers, so bear with me, please. And if we could look at the slide, year over year. I just had a question about the figures at the bottom. And and let's say, let's take for example fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, four point two. Where does that figure factor in into the following fiscal year? Or am I even reading that correctly?
It's, it's just money that's still available to be spent. So it would basically be the beginning balance for the next year. So we, when I'm putting this report together, I'm not putting at the top the four million to say, and then adding the revenue. So this is just what the ending balance was. And then you add in the new revenues and the new expenses to come out to what's left.
Okay, great. Thank you. And and then so this question then might go to the broader team. What is preventing the city from spending that money during fiscal year? Like, why do we have four point two still in the pot? Can we still just go for it and fix the streets?
It doesn't mean that it's not assigned to different projects. It just has not been paid out yet for my report. So I'm pretty sure that they can tell you they'll have a lot of different projects that are actually still in the queue, just has not been paid out. So when you're looking at mine, you're going to say actual expenses, actual money out the door.
Another, another answer, Councilmember Garcia, is we just have also not staffing. We, we, we lost one of our senior engineers who we lost. He was our pavement guy and he worked, he just kicked out pavement contracts one after another. And when he left, we frankly struggled for a couple of months to figure out how do we backfill that position. So it's, it's also a staffing concern and that's where gratefully last, last council meeting, you helped us out a little bit by at least retaining and hopefully attracting more, but our objective is a hundred percent. We want to spend the money as fast as we can. Because we know in twenty twenty-seven, Councilmember Hopper, we want to have a council that is listening and says, okay, how can we now maybe use another tax measure for something good? So it's, it's, it's an absolutely great question. I wish we would run it down as fast as we can, but it's sometimes very hard to do.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I think that answers my questions. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, and then for me, so the plan for measure P and measure S was to touch every street, which staff has alluded to. And so my question would be, where are we at in regards to fulfilling that promise to the community in being able to do that by the end of, I'm assuming it would be fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight?
So we're obviously not there yet. We have a busy couple of years ahead of us. So we have a lot of projects in the hopper, even though we had a little bit of a lull this past year. I expect we'll be spending money pretty rapidly over the next two or two to three years to catch up. So we have a lot of projects in the queue. We're assessing if there's any gaps in our planned projects for any streets that may be untouched. But we do have quite a bit of work to do, including the concrete streets, as Andrea mentioned, which are probably the more challenging streets to rehab.
And so to ask a more direct question, do we feel today that we'll be able to fulfill that promise of touching every street by the end of the, by the conclusion of measure P, measure S?
We're going to do our best. I, I I'd say I hate to make any commitments, but I think we'll for sure touch the majority of the streets out there. And if there are any that are untouched, we'll have a pretty good idea what needs to be done in the future years.
Okay, thank you. And then last question is, where can the public go to see the schedule of the projects that are in the queue?
We do have information on our website. We work with our city information officer to, on infographics that show where the next few projects are going to be over the next few years. I don't have the website memorized on top of my head and dredge, you know, for our pavement now.
Could we, could we capture that and then we'll go out to public comment? And then I think it would be good to just share it so that folks that might be listening from home can know where to navigate to get to that.
Absolutely.
Just, just look up measure S, measure P on the website and it directs you. I just have it on my screen here right now, so.
Is it an easy URL to share, Hans?
No, it's not. Unfortunately, I tried first. Several, and it has those weird extra sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Percentages in there, so.
Do you want to, you want to try for us? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I think.
I might as well.
Okay, so we can go to monterey.org backslash fixing streets.
There it is. I love it. Thank you. Thank you. And I appreciate all the work that you all do. So thank you for that. All right, with that, we will take it out to the public. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Are you sure?
Thank you.
All right, let's look online. Do we have any hands online? I'm going to do a countdown so we can capture all those that might be ready. What's wrong?
No, also just to let you know, we also have comments from our measure P and S committee member, Rick Aldinger, who unfortunately Carol Chabrasian, the, the chair couldn't be here. So
Okay.
And and he was, he's part of our staff presentation as well before we go to public comment.
Okay, do we want to jump to that now then? Okay, perfect.
And Rick is with us on online and he's, he's up here on screen.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I just want to start by giving you my appreciation for letting.
And I I just want to start by uh, uh, giving you my appreciation for letting me do this remotely as I am under the weather this evening, so I I appreciate that opportunity. Uh, I just want to say that uh, the uh, the Oversight Committee has uh, worked with city staff uh, since the inception of Measure P and and has continued through Measure S. And we look at the report and the data and uh, all indications are that uh, that uh, the project has been successful. We we are accomplishing uh, what we set out to do. And I I also want to uh, really uh, extend my appreciation, the committee's appreciation, to uh, the staff we've worked with over the the last several years on the uh, the streets project. Uh, they've been very accommodating of us and uh, uh, very willing to answer our questions and change formats and presentations to make uh, what sometimes our technical discussions a little bit easier for us to understand. And again, much appreciated uh, uh, of the staff for that. Um, and I just uh, uh, want to say a couple of things. Uh, you know, the uh, this Measure P and then uh, the continuation with Measure S was intended as a kind of a catch up uh, of uh, getting our streets that had been uh, neglected to some extent uh, back up to uh, where they needed to be so that we could all be proud of them and uh, didn't have to worry about damaging our vehicles when we drive on them. And uh, to a couple of the council members' comments, uh, when this sun sets in twenty twenty seven, uh, we we all hope that uh, by that point, that the city has uh, worked uh, the the city budget to the extent that allows us to maintain those streets in that uh, high level of repair as opposed to letting them deteriorate again when we need to, you know, do something more drastic to catch up later on. And so uh, uh, those are my thoughts, uh, my comments. And and again, I appreciate the the staff working with all of us over the past several years to uh, get as far as we have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick. And I appreciate you and everybody else on the service to help support the the council and the city and and achieving the goals and making sure that we're spending those funds appropriately. So thank you for the presentation. All right, and with that, we will jump back to um, public comment. It's getting about that time. Um, so we have two folks online, it sounds like. I'm going to do a countdown real quick just to make sure that there's nobody else. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And I think we still have those, those two. All right.
First, let's hear from Jean.
Hi, it's Jean Rash. And I was um, on the Measure S committee. And along with um, Hans Janisch in our neighborhood, we were encouraging the Measure S committee to think broader and to incorporate into the definition of the dig once policy to incorporate undergrounding utility lines when a street was entirely rebuilt. As a result of um, not getting too far with that hope, um, my neighborhood established montereyundergrounding.net. It can be reached at montereyundergrounding.net. And we've done five or six years of research and um, meetings uh, with different cities and agencies that are undergrounding their neighborhoods or their towns, meeting with um, engineers and professionals in this area. And we're, we're very excited. We also look at funding mechanisms. But one of the main differences that can be had is the approximately one third financial savings if undergrounding is done when the street is rebuilt. So I'm hoping that if if there's another general funding or a street repair funding that we can stretch farther into the future and look at undergrounding, at least when we restructure, for all the advantages that we now know undergrounding brings, especially the decrease in fires, the the decrease in blocking our escape routes, the um, avoidance of overloading our utility lines and um, the beautification of the city. So um, there remains a lot of interest in this and perhaps we can incorporate that vision if there is a another push. And I hope, I would invite you to go to montereyundergrounding.net, look around, see the work we've done and um, perhaps we can work together to incorporate ideas for the benefit of the city. Thank you very much.
All right, and our next speaker is Esther.
Hello again. Um, I wanted to bring up two points. Um, I don't recall when North Fremont is going to be done, but we are the entrance to the city, one of the main entrances to the city. And Seaside did their their street on North Fremont and it abruptly ends at Monterey. And visually, you can see the, you know, where it ends and where's our start. But if you drive it, you can also feel it. Because that section from where they ended over, you know, just past Casanova is a disaster. So I'm sure that, you know, we're not a priority on this side of the city. Otherwise, it would have already been attacked. But as an entrance to the city, I feel like it's important for us to have that looked at sooner rather than later because it is an embarrassment. It was bad before, but with what work Seaside has done, it makes how terrible ours is stand out even more. I also want to bring up a point that, you know, I'm not sure when my neighborhood was created, but we have a stretch on Casanova, on the five hundred block of Casanova without a sidewalk. And I was told that way back last century, the people that owned that property wanted to keep it rural feeling, quote. Now, rural feeling without a sidewalk on a busy street like Casanova is, which we have a traffic study to prove how busy it is, forces pedestrians to walk in the street. And we have gotten an NCIP approval to to do the sidewalk, but the resident there is difficult and does not cooperate with any NCIP issue that we have, whether it's putting a radar sign over there or installing a sidewalk. First of all, I think the city was remiss in not putting a sidewalk there. I don't know how many other parts of the city don't have sidewalks. I don't think it should be an NCIP funded uh, responsibility for us to have a basic sidewalk that every single city has when it's constructed. So I'm not sure how to approach this with this difficult resident, but I strongly urge you to find a way around this problem because it is a liability and it will be a big problem because it's all also dark in that corner. And that resident also doesn't want to have a street light added that also was approved by NCIP. So I think pedestrian safety should be very important and we should find a way around this resident. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will bring it back to the council. Um, I'll just try to ask staff real quick if it's possible to answer some of the questions that came up in public comment. The first that I heard was around North Fremont um, work. And again, I think folks can go to the website and look at the schedule, but I'm not sure if somebody could speak to that if it's top of mind at the moment.
Yes, um, in fact, we had drafted a response email when this came up. So that section of North Fremont uh, does need rehab. So if we were just to do a slurry, it would kind of be like putting icing on a cake that's crumbling. So it would look good for maybe a minute and then it would fall apart. So that does need geotechnical. It is um, under designed, so it's not ignored. It is being addressed. But when you're talking about road rehab, it does take um, more design efforts because it's not just a quick slurry contract that we can get out. Um, so it it does, it's more involved. We want to make sure we design it correctly.
Perfect. And then the second was, um, I think, I I don't know how that part is um, answered, but the installation of sidewalks, I know that there might be some tension with neighbors, but I'm not sure if you have any thoughts there.
Yeah, the the sidewalks, so we we haven't, so we're doing uh, trip and fall hazards as part of Measure S, but Measure S is not meant to go um, do sidewalks everywhere. And I know that we have some residents that do like the more rural aspect of it and some that don't. NCIP is always a good um, a good process for that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
A just comment. Yeah, I just wanted to always outline the fact that it's made possible by the residents that voted. And uh, going back to Measure P, twenty twenty fourteen, when it was on the ballot, and then the follow up with Measure S, significant work um, has been accomplished. So I really do encourage everybody to go to the monterey.org because it it really is fascinating to see what's been worked on already and and some of the streets identified for future projects as well. Um, the other thing that should be factored into this status report of what we saw in the financials is we had two horrible storms last year that significantly, you know, impact any work that ever is ever going to happen. And also, uh, the winter time is not a great time to see a lot of roadway work. So we do know that we have a compressed schedule of timeframe because it's got to work around the wet, wet months and dry months. And then, you know, some high impact areas with the tourism that we get. So I wouldn't say we have twelve months like everybody else in the world has twelve months. Uh, that's not really true when it comes to seeing some of the work get, get done. So thank you for the staff that works on all of this and thank you for their, their work and their hard work, uh, pushing on those that are subcontracted to the city to do the work, uh, serving the community. So thank you and great to see that pavement index continue to rise. And I think Alan and I were, you know, making phone calls and we were actively involved in the first Measure P and then the follow on with Measure S. And um, we heard loud and clear that uh, they, the community expected an improvement. And I would proudly like to say that city staff has delivered significant improvement. And as they said, there's more to come, but thank you, staff.
And Councilor Smith, anybody else? Um, so I will just bring up um, just overall appreciation for the work that's being done behind the scenes. And I I know that I was asking a pointed question earlier. Um, and I only asked that because I think it's important that we um, are transparent with the public in regards to that. So my hope is that by the next time we come around, hopefully, we've done enough analysis to be able to determine what does the outlook look like? And does it look like we're going to make it, make it? And I think it's completely okay if we don't. Um, because I know, uh, and and I, and I think the majority of the community trusts in the process and knows that we're doing whatever we can to do this work. Um, and for folks that live here, they see it and they know it. Um, when a road's closed down because there's um, work being done, but it's all for the better. It's for the improvement of transportation within our communities. Um, and so I just want to give tremendous appreciation for that. I I just want to highlight, it's not just um, um, the streets. I I just want to reiterate, there's other elements of this funding too that are critically important. Um, ADA, getting us in compliant with federal laws and making sure that we're making our community accessible, not just to able bodied people. Um, so really critically important there. Um, our sidewalks, which have been alluded to several times. In fact, um, across the street from my house, I've been um, looking at this buckling sidewalk from this huge tree with roots coming out from underneath the sidewalk. And and if you are uh, in a wheelchair, there's just no way for you to currently uh, go over that. Well, actually, especially right now because it's taped off, but they were doing work last week. And so this stuff is actively happening and and um, just tremendously appreciated. And then it was also alluded to earlier about the storm drains. Um, these systems are are super old. Um, and so to make sure that we prevent flooding um, and and create a better system to make sure that the bare bones of what I think a lot of us take for granted um, every single day um, is working optimally is just really greatly appreciated. So many kudos to the Public Works team for everything that you're doing to to make this happen and in supporting the taxpayers as um, trust in the city to to execute this. So with that, I will move on to the next item, uh, which is closed session. Um, so if anybody wishes to speak on items on the closed session agenda, there are two items. Closed session item number one is a closed session conference of real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight property, thirty Fisherman's Wharf. Um, agency negotiators Kimberly Cole and Jenna Aldretti negotiating parties, Michael Ungaro, San Pedro Fish Market Company LLC under negotiation price and term of payment for new lease agreement. And closed session item number two is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section fifty four, ninety five, six point nine D two and E three in regards to Western Sky Produce LLC Business License Tax Dispute. Sorry, and before I open it up to public comment, there's one additional thought that I forgot to share in the last item, which is um, Jean Rash had brought up the topic about undergrounding. And so I think it would be helpful to have some figures in a hypothetical situation perhaps in regards to like, if we were doing this more expensive fully rebuild of a road, what would it look like for us to lay um, the infrastructure for undergrounding? Um, what is that delta that would allow that? And and part of the question there is if that's something where the council could have a conversation around having some funds allocated. I know that there's been some preliminary conversations with um, NCI around NCIP and what the future that looks like. And so um, it would be helpful to just kind of have some kind of figure or understanding of what that might look like as we debate that topic um, moving forward. All right, with that, going back to the closed session um, items, is there anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak on closed session items? Right, do we have anybody online? I'll do a countdown just to make sure. Five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody, no public comments on closed session items. And with that, we will recess and reconvene at seven o'clock. Thank you, everybody. And with that, we will recess and reconvene at seven o'clock. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back to this meeting on December 5th for our evening session. We're going to reconvene here and we're going to start off by doing the pledge of allegiance and we'll ask Councilmember Smith to kick us off here.
Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we will go to general public comments, continued for matters not on today's agenda. Do we have any takers in the chamber? Anybody? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry. We'll go online. I'll do a countdown. If you can use the raise hand function if you're on Zoom online to five, four, three, two, one. Okay, we have nobody online, so we will close general public comment and we'll do announcements from closed session, please.
All right, announcements from closed session. On item number one was a closed session conference with real property negotiators. Pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property was 30 Fisherman's Wharf with agency negotiators Kimberly Cole and Jana Aldretti. Negotiating parties, Michael Angaro from the San Pedro Fish Market Company, LLC. Under negotiation price in terms of payment for lease, new lease agreement. And the report out is that there was no reportable action taken. On item number two, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9, D2E3 in regarding Western Sky Produce LLC. A business license tax dispute confidential direction was provided to legal counsel on a unanimous call vote.
All righty, thank you for that. With that, we'll go to public appearance. Item number 11, receive informational update on cannabis application process and we'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. What we plan on doing tonight is to provide you with an information about how we have structured the cannabis application process. There are several phases in that application process. There are also roles to play by the council as well as by the mayor and vice mayor Barber in January. So without further ado, I, we have prepared a presentation and our assistant city manager, Ned Rosha, will present.
Great, thank you very much, City Manager Uslar, and I'll be sharing my screen here. Let's make this happen. Okay, here we go. So we'll provide you with, as Hans said, an informational update on the cannabis application process. And a quick summary of where we are along the roadmap. We are getting ready to launch. This is, we are in late 2023 and the most recent action provided by council. Let me try to hide this meeting control here. The latest action from council, most recently, we had November 7th where council passed the first reading of an ordinance and accepted a sequoia exemption. The second reading took place on November 21st. And we're here today with you to provide an update on the application guidelines and criteria. Council earlier today as part of the consent calendar adopted the second reading of the ordinance that allows for the full cost recovery for administering the cannabis business ordinance. And the next item that city council will hear this evening will be a resolution to update the master fee schedule, which will include the cannabis retail application. Here is a recap of the current application timeline. We plan to open up the application submittal period next week. And this is, the application process is being implemented in four phases. There's phase one involves a completeness check and a determination of eligibility. We'll walk you through that process. Phase two is the application evaluation and review. Phase three is interview and phase four is the final recommendation and the award of permits that will be issued. So this is not an eye test for you. On the left, we'll walk through each of these four sections so that you can see we've developed a flow chart to help, help not only the city council as well as the public and prospective applicants understand each of the phases and how that'll work. So we'll, we'll go through each of those four phases. The first phase, as we discussed, is going to be the responsibility of our consultant. Our consultant is, has joined us here online on Zoom. His name is Kyle Tankart and he's with SCI Consultants. So he'll be able to answer any questions that staff aren't able to answer and provide some insight on the process. The, that first phase will also involve the police department as well. Phase two is the initial application evaluation and review process. That is completely the responsibility of the consultant. Phase three is the selection committee and interviews. As Hans mentioned, we have the mayor, Mayor Williamson will be part of that as well as will be Vice Mayor Barber. And city manager staff will provide support for phase three. And phase four, the last piece, this will involve city council and city staff for final approval, the zone clearance and the award of permits. So let's begin and go in depth regarding the each phase. We, we lost the slide for phase one, so let me quickly go back to that. I'm not sure what happened with the first, the first phase, so we'll, we'll do our best to zoom in here. I apologize. Something happened with our, the version that the version that was, I, I am very sorry. We had this squared away a moment ago and we lost the first. Here we go. I'll, let me share a screen one more time. I think it was that some of the editing that, here we go. Phase one, so this is the completeness and eligibility portion. And you
Hi, everybody. Welcome back to this meeting on December 5th for our evening session. We're going to reconvene here and we're going to start off by doing the pledge of allegiance and we'll ask Councilmember Smith to kick us off here.
Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we will go to general public comments, continued for matters not on today's agenda. Do we have any takers in the chamber? Anybody? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, I stop. We'll go online. I'll do a countdown. If you can use a raise hand function if you're on Zoom online to five, four, three, two, one. Okay, we have nobody online, so we will close general public comment and we'll do announcements from closed session, please.
All right, announcements from closed session on item number one was a closed session conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The property was 30 Fisherman's Wharf with agency negotiators Kimberly Cole and Jana Aldretti. Negotiating parties Michael Angaro from the San Pedro Fish Market Company LLC. Under negotiation price in terms of payment for lease, new lease agreement. And the report out is that there was no reportable action taken. On item number two, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9 D2E3 in regarding Western Sky Produce LLC. A business license tax dispute confidential direction was provided to legal counsel on a unanimous call vote.
Alrighty, thank you for that. With that, we'll go to public appearance. Item number 11, receive informational update on cannabis application process and we'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. What we plan on doing tonight is to provide you with the, an information about how we have structured the cannabis application process. There are several phases in that application process. There are also roles to play by the council as well as by the mayor and vice mayor Barber in January. So without further ado, I, we have prepared a presentation and our assistant city manager, Ned Rosha and Asatira will present.
Great, thank you very much, City Manager Uslar, and I'll be sharing my screen here. Let's make this happen. Okay, here we go. So we'll provide you with, as Hans said, an informational update on the cannabis application process. And a quick summary of where we are along the roadmap. We are getting ready to launch. This is, we are in late 2023 and the most recent action provided by council. Let me try to hide this meeting control here. The latest action from council, most recently, we had November 7th where council passed the first reading of an ordinance and accepted a sequoia exemption. The second reading took place on November 21st. And we're here today with you to provide an update on the application guidelines and criteria. Counsel earlier today as part of the consent calendar adopted the second reading of the ordinance that allows for the full cost recovery for administering the cannabis business ordinance. And the next item that city council will hear this evening will be a resolution to update the master fee schedule, which will include the cannabis retail application. Here is a recap of the current application timeline. We plan to open up the application submittal period next week. And this is, the application process is being implemented in four phases. There's phase one involves a completeness check and a determination of eligibility. We'll walk you through that process. Phase two is the application evaluation and review. Phase three is interview and phase four is the final recommendation and the award of permits that will be issued. So this is not an eye test for you. On the left, we'll walk through each of these four sections. So that you can see we've developed a flow chart to help, help not only the city council as well as the, the public and prospective applicants understand each of the phases and how that'll work. So we'll, we'll go through each of those four phases. The first phase, as we discussed, is going to be the responsibility of our consultant. Our consultant is, has joined us here online on Zoom. His name is Kyle Tankart and he's with SCI Consultants, so he'll be able to answer any questions that staff aren't able to answer and provide some insight on the process. The, that first phase will also involve the police department as well. Phase two is the initial application evaluation and review process. That is completely the responsibility of the consultant. Phase three is a selection committee and interviews. As Hans mentioned, we have the mayor, Mayor Williamson will be part of that as well as will be Vice Mayor Barber. And city manager staff will provide support for phase three. And phase four, the last piece, this will involve city council and city staff for final approval, the zone clearance and the award of permits. So let's begin and go in depth regarding the each phase. We, we lost the slide for phase one, so let me quickly go back to that. I'm not sure what happened with the first, the first phase, so we'll, we'll do our best to, to zoom in here. I apologize, something happened with our, the version that the version that was, I, I am very sorry, we had this squared away a moment ago. And we lost the first. Here we go. I'll, let me share a screen one more time. I think it was that some of the editing that, here we go, phase one. So this is the completeness and eligibility portion. And you can see here, you know. Okay, completeness check eligibility. So this is a period that we said before, it's a 45 day applications middle period starts next week. Applications will be due on January 25th with fees due between January 4th and January 25th. After that, our consultant will complete a completeness check and a determination of eligibility that'll be held between January 25th to February 14th. And the fees for this phase is $4,845 per application plus $300 per background checked. When we say $300 per background check, it's based on the number of owners. So each owner will have to go through a comprehensive background check. The bank background check is conducted by a third party to go through the criminal history and other, other background check work. In addition to the third party background check that's conducted by our third party provider, each owner will also have to go through a live scan process. This is a fingerprinting process that is conducted and goes through the California Department of Justice system. And each individual will have to go to a law enforcement agency that provides live scan checks. So they don't have to go to the Monterey Police Department. They can go anywhere they'd like. And those results will then be given to the Monterey Police Department for, for review as part of that eligibility review. So live scan fees will vary depending on the agency that the individual goes to. So once an individual submits their retail application, if it meets the eligibility criteria, including the major components. And if they pass the background check requirements, they'll then go on to phase two. This is where the consultant will review all the applications. They'll also score the applications based on a 200 point maximum scale. The review will take place between February 14th through March 29th. And the fees for this application review are included as part of phase one. And, and so that's, that's clear. And what the, what they'll do is they'll score, the consultant will score all the applications. And if the applicant scores in the top eight of the storefront retail and the top three of the non storefront retail, they'll move on to phase three, which will be the selection committee and interviews. So to be clear, if we receive more than eight storefront retail applications and more than three non storefront retail applications, the applicants that are in the bottom will not move on to phase three. This is where the selection committee, this is the mayor, Mayor Williamson and Vice Mayor Barber will, will conduct interviews and then score the top eight. This will be held, our tentative date, dates right now is March 29th through April 12th. And those fees will be due within five business days of notification that the applicant has moved to phase three. The fees for this is proposed to be $1,840. So this is that ranking process. The selection committee will, will score and the top four storefront retail applicants and the single top non storefront retail applicant from this process with the mayor and vice mayor will move on to phase four. And that phase four involves the city council considering approval of the top four storefront and the top non storefront retail. This will happen, we're expecting in mid-April to, to May 10th. The fees for this process is proposed to be $2,360 with the fees due within five business days of notification that the applicant has moved to phase four. The, the idea behind this is also, and we plan to come before council soon with an, an amendment to the ordinance is that approved applicants will be notified and there will be a lottery or a drawing of the top four storefront retailers held to determine the order of selection for each applicant's business location. So the idea is that you have the top four applicants that council approves. Once approved, there'll be a drawing and each the first applicant will get to choose which district they want their business to be held in. And then the second one will have three choices left. The third will have two choices left and the final will, will be left with, with the business district remaining. After that process, the, the applicant will submit their fee along with a zone clearance request that is tied to a specific business address. So once they know what, what district they'll, they'll be assigned to, they they'll work with likely at that time, a property owner, a landlord and identify where they like to submit a zone clearance request to the community development department. And then we will then, if, if it meets all the criteria, issue the zone clearance for each of the business districts. Henry Row, Old Monterey, Lighthouse and North Fremont. Not necessarily in that order, but, but each business district would, would have no more than one zone clearance issued. There will also be one non storefront permit issued by the city manager as well. So that's, that's the phase, those are the four phases and we also have scoring criteria that is proposed based on our discussions with, with the consultant and some of the feedback council has provided about what's important to city council in considering the, the retail cannabis operators. We have a scoring points of up to 200 points. Qualification of owners, 40 points is proposed to be the maximum score. 40 points for a business plan, 40, up to 40 points for a strong security plan, up to 10 points for a storage and transportation plan. 20 points for labor and employment plan, 30 points for a local enterprise and engagement plan and 20 points for sustainability. And some of the, some of what we've talked about in the past with regard to the, the, the scoring here without going into detail about how many points me, are within each, each category, for example, but for qualifications, we're looking for industry knowledge for their, their training in the industry, their business experience. On the business plan side, for example, we're looking for a strong business operations. What's their accounting software system? What are some of the procedures for deliveries as, as one example, their finance plan? On the security side, we are looking for strong security plans that meet professional standards and, and that meet the, the industry standards. We look at operational security as well that include alarm systems and surveillance perimeter, other aspects. On the storage and transportation plan side, this specifically looks at how do they secure and transport cannabis product? On labor employment, we, we talked at the last council meeting about local hiring. Does the applicant plan to hire local residents in the area and how do they plan to employ the local workforce? What are the wages of, of employees that are, that are employed with these retailers? Non discrimination policies is one example. And then on the local enterprise and engagement plan, we're, we're looking for involvement with local business organizations, chambers of commerce, what have you. And then sustainability, are they meeting the best practices of equitable sustainability practices in, in, in the area? So that gives you a little bit of a flavor of, of what are parts of these various scoring criteria that's being proposed as part of the review process. And we wanted to also give council a heads up that we do plan to bring forth already some cleanup language for the cannabis ordinance based on a couple of, of tweaks that staff have recently discussed. One of them is this, this lottery process on the business district location to streamline the process. As, as I mentioned, and then the second is redefining the youth center are, we recently discovered that the, one of the definitions of youth center include what we've seen, some of the video arcades that are, that are opening up and we now have three video arcades in the community. Some of them are catered to adults. The one downtown as an example, and with those youth center buffer zones, it essentially would exclude large, large swaths of both old town as well as the Kennedy Road Business District. So we'll be making some changes to the ordinance, but it does not affect our timeline because the, the buffer zones is not a, doesn't come up until phase four and that's later in, in this, in the spring. So when we bring updated cannabis ordinance before you, there will be time for implementation and the 30 days after the second reading to, to make a couple of these changes as well. So if you have any questions, staff is here to answer questions. And we also have, as I said earlier, folks from our consultant SCI available.
Okay, questions, council?
I saw Councilman Garcia's hand go first.
Thank you. Thank you, Ned, for the information. I have a few questions. In the agenda packet, there's a copy and this is at page five. I don't know which page number helps. It's a better identified.
Do you have a packet page number?
Packet page number 144. Supporting information. And I can read it out. I might not need to reference it. The, the supporting information, there's a question, has the applicant or any of its owners been subject to any action, including but not limited to suspension, denial revocation of a cannabis business license? What if the answer is yes? How will, how will staff treat that?
Yeah, we'll ask Kyle Tankert from our consulting firm to talk a little bit about that process. There's also state guidelines and we can walk through what if, that's part of the background check process, for example, if someone's convicted of certain felonies, they then are disqualified to, to receive a cannabis license. But Kyle is here and he's joined us here on Zoom. Welcome, Kyle.
Kyle, you're muted.
Thank you, Nat. Good evening. Yes, so, so that section right there, and I apologize, I should have double checked this prior, but typically cannabis, you know, the ordinance will specify certain limitations on restrictions to issuing a permit and, and sometimes those restrictions are, you know, having a license suspended or revoked by the state or in a previous jurisdiction. So I appreciate you pointing that out. So I think what staff and I need to do is review the ordinance to see if that limitation is in there. If not, we will remove that question from the application.
Limitation is in there and we're, we'll go back inside that, yep.
So since it's there, if the answer is yes, then that would disqualify the applicant?
That, that's, that's.
That's correct.
Got it. Next question. And this is from packet page 147. A physical location shall be required prior to the issuance of a zone clearance. So is there a sense of what? What window of time there might be between? I guess the applicant's election and, and when they have to identify a, a physical location? Knowing that there's going to be a lottery in place as well. Like what, what does that timeframe look like?
So, so the idea is that once, once we council has selected the top four. So you, you have, we have the top four retail businesses that are authorized to operate in Monterey will go through a, a lottery to determine which, which business district they're assigned. At that point, they'll have, they'll have up to, we, we have here, how many days it's in the ordinance to actually create and, and actually file and operate. We, Kyle, it's in.
It's 12 months of issuance.
Yeah. It's 18 months is actually.
18, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's 18, not 12. So it's, they have 18 months to actually begin operations. So there's, there's quite a bit of time for the business to be able to identify and secure a location and then begin operations.
All that in 18 months? So basically from the moment that the applicant knows what district or, or the permit is issued.
It's 18 months once they, once they are issued permit.
Okay.
And I believe it can be extended, but let me just double check.
Yeah, 18 months from when they, maybe you're asking when, once they get the, the zone clearance, what's the timeline?
It's, it is.
No, I think the permit, yeah, go ahead.
So it does say 12 months. So cannabis business permit shall be exercised within 12 months, a showing, upon a showing of significant and diligent, diligent progress and towards exercising the permit and the city manager can provide a six month extension of time. And it'll be considered exercise when any of the following occur, a certificate of occupancy, the permitted use has commenced on the site or a city building permit is secured and construction commenced.
Got it.
So there doesn't have to be constructed even, just, just the commencement of a construction.
Right, right.
Got it.
So it's, it's 12 months initially with a six month extension, which gets you to the 18 months that Nat and I were talking about.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And going back to the lottery. And, and kind of thinking about the efficiencies here with the application. So, so what if the applicant gets to this point where the applicant now is about to participate in the lottery? And then the only choices that are available based on the lottery are choices that this applicant is not interested in. So, so we have four districts, right? There are two left, for example. The applicant is not interested in setting up shop in those two districts.
We, we have a, we go back, then they they decide they, they don't want to move forward. Those two zones are still open. We can, we can then go back to the waitlist. If, if council so chooses to go back and reauth, go back and review the waitlist and reauthorize the, the others that are runners up, if you will, that didn't make it to the top four.
They will be ranked and so the council wouldn't have to do additional review and vetting and approval. So they'll be ranked and then the next on the waitlist would just be up.
I get that and, and that's why I mentioned, mentioned it in the context of efficiencies, right? Because in essence, we'd be going back to the pool, selecting someone else, right? So I wonder if, if maybe earlier in the process, there's an opportunity for applicants to express interest where they would like to set up shop, knowing that there's a lottery coming up ahead, just a thought. And then I think here my, yeah, I think.
I, I could respond to that if you like. So what the city, what we built into the ordinance was this social equity component.
Right.
And so the theory is that if you have more money, you can secure a leased space right now, potentially on Lighthouse or somewhere else and pay the money for that rented space in hopes that you're going to be awarded a permit. And what that does is it puts wealthier people, more connected people in a better position than others that are not similarly situated. And so the suggestion was that this is a social equity component where you can't do that ahead of time. So the top four will be on equal footing. And it's by random chance which district they get to operate in, but they're approved to operate. They just have to find a space and they're all operating from the same playing field. It evens the playing field, but it doesn't have to be that way. That's a policy, policy choice. We could require them to have a, an address at the time of application. That's not the way the ordinance is set up right now, but that is an option.
No, and I get that and I appreciate it, but also looking at it also as an equity piece. Folks are putting a great deal of investment to get to that point in the application to then figure out, well, this is really not a place that I envisioned my business being set up. So I, I mean, I don't know the, the answer. But it kind of feels like there's some clarifying that we need to do there.
Yeah, sorry, no.
Blind bubble. And I'll echo, I'll echo what, what, what our city attorney mentioned, you know, for when we've talked about the cannabis roadmap and, and also with, with the prior council was, we wanted to, as, as Chrisie said, level that playing field and because there was a concern and I think still is that with, with council adopting and moving forward with cannabis are only the businesses, the nationwide, you know, cannabis retailers that have deep pockets. going to try to secure leases with certain, certain landlords in business districts and have a leg up to operate in Monterey. And we didn't want that. And the idea is let's, let's make it fair. And part of that is it's, you know, first, it's not going to be first come, first served, it's not going to be, you know, who has the deepest pockets. It's going to be, it'll be randomized based on the merits of community engagement and other factors in the criteria. And and not only until we know who the top four are, will, and not until that applicant is, knows exactly what district they'll be in, will they then start to identify where they want to locate their business? That was, that was the intent.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I like the intent. I think there there just needs to be a little bit refining, but I'll leave it at that. Just to not get too much into the weeds. In terms of of let's see here. In terms of the background checks, how does that play into the timeline? I know sometimes background checks can take two weeks or two months.
That's, that's a, I get quite, so background checks, there's, there's two parts to the background check. One is with a private firm that conducts the background check. They're able to, what what we've heard from Kyle, and Kyle, you can elaborate, is that can be done within a week because of the the systems and the third-party access to to data. That's why it's a three hundred dollar background check. They go through their process. In the meantime, we also ask that they begin the fingerprinting process. Sometimes you're correct, that can, that can be a quick one week, two weeks, it sometimes can take thirty days for it. We will not disqualify anyone if we're waiting for fingerprinting until it comes up that they actually have felony on their record, or that they meet the certain criteria for disqualification. Otherwise, we'll keep them through the each phase, but the first private background check will be able to be done within the first week or two.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have. Thank you.
I think I saw Councilman Hoffa's hand go up next.
Yeah, I have two questions. The first has to do with phase one, and I'm just wondering if we can get a little maybe granularity or detail in terms of what sort of findings in the background check would be disqualifying? And then, you know, a related aspect to that, would something like a prior conviction for cannabis possession be considered disqualifying?
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Chief Dave over with the Monterey Police Department. So if you look at the actual code that was passed, section seven dash seven point one three specifically relates to the items that were, will be disqualifying. And I think that Councilmember Garcia had asked about if they had been revoked or denied. That's within five years. That's seven, seven thirteen G. If they had issues at another dispensary. And and clearly, what we're trying to do are find the best four operators, right? If we can find those four best operators, it saves all of us a lot of of the issues. And so clearly, previous aspects where they weren't operating well somewhere else gives us an indication. On the other hand, if they're operating well in other places, that gives us a great indication that they'll be a great operator here. To Councilmember Hoffa's question, number J specifically relates to those things that will disqualify them from the criminal background. Almost all of those are felonies. So specific to a previous conviction for marijuana possession, no. If it was a misdemeanor, I'd have to look. And when you read this, it relates back to the Business and Professions Code, section twenty-six zero five seven B four, which, when you look up that code, it talks about things like, and this isn't just these things, but a violent felony conviction as found in six, six, seven point five of the penal code, a serious felony conviction in eleven ninety-two point seven of the penal code, a felony conviction involving fraud, deceit, or embezzlement, a felony conviction for hiring, employing, or using a minor in transporting, carrying, selling, giving away, et cetera, of a controlled substance to a minor. So it depends on what exactly you're asking about, but a simple possession of marijuana? No, that's not going to be. But that's where the backgrounder and and the police department have to really look at these things. And when you look at those sections of the penal code that I just described, we have to go through and see what's a serious felony? What's a violent felony to see if that would disqualify? And that's how we would set it up. Once we get the fingerprints back, it'll tell us exactly what their convictions are. We'll go through the list. We'll say, no, they don't meet any of these, and that is not going to disqualify.
Thanks, that that helps a lot.
Could I ask a follow-up question on this, just while we're on this topic? And while the police chief is up here? Is is that list from the state legislation, or did we add to that? Either way.
We've stuck with the state criminal offenses.
Okay.
The other part about having a use permit or something revoked from a different jurisdiction, that's a local
Policy.
Yes. And it was pointed out in a staff meeting earlier, and we'll look into this, that it's actually harder to pass a background in our city for sidewalk vending than it will be for a cannabis business.
But that's a great question. If I could just spend a moment on explaining that. That when people say a background, I think that you're just thinking about this criminal background piece, right? And that's very specific in that section J. But it's not easy, because then you got to go refer back to these other sections in the penal code to find out what those crimes are. But for us, it's just kind of a checklist that those are not the things. The other part of the background is doing the work to find out if this person operated, and and it's very clear in the code who those folks are, where they had issues in other places. Now, if they're a brand-new business, there's probably not going to be that, but a lot of times, what we're hoping to find in that background is that they operated in another city, or they were a manager of a place in another city. And then that city has contacted, said, no, we had no issues, and and they were a good business, or the opposite. Because again, the goal is to find those four best operating groups, and that's why we're going through this to score them, is the goal is to find the the four best plus the one so that we don't have to constantly be regulating them because they're doing what they should be doing. And I jumped up here on purpose, because I've lived this before in a prior professional job. And and what we find is, if we can do a really good job with finding those four really good ones, it saves all of us a ton of heartache. But if we have one operator that's not doing what we need to do, it will create a lot of issues because of all the litigation and everything else that will go along with that. So really, the goal is to find those four or five best operators that we possibly can.
Thanks a lot. My second question had to do with, I think it's, I guess, phase three or relationship between phase, transition phase three to phase four. So I understand the subcommittee will rank. When we talked last time, I thought that the subcommittee would rank, and then council would kind of make a final decision, similar to what we do with board appointments. But as I'm reading this, it looks like kind of once the four are identified, that's it. Am I understanding that correctly?
The council will will consider the the recommendation, so the council will have the final say.
Okay, so council will have the final say. That's good. Thanks a lot. That's all my questions.
Okay, Dr. Barber.
So thank you for that, chief. That helped a lot of some of the questions that I had. But before I get to my question, and 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 maybe I didn't hear this correctly, or I'm taking out our context, but Kristin, you just Kristin, you just said something about it's easy to get a permit for a vendor than for cannabis? Is that true?
It's, it was something we discussed in a meeting earlier today, that that might actually be the case. And so we're going to look into that and see
That's concerning to me.
Revisions.
Okay, so that's another, that's another thing. I just had to bring that piece up. Okay, so and packet page one forty-one. And I hopefully I'm on the right ones, it's not just printing out. I just had a quick question about I noticed that they, how you have the application, then you had the procedures and review. And then you had the financial responsibility indemnity and consent to inspection terms for all of the different pieces for the storefront and the non-storefront and the testing laboratory. And then for the event, when it gets down to what is this cannabis business permit application? For cannabis retailer and distributor, I was trying to figure out where the procedure and review part was, because everything else kind of had conformity. And then when it got down to this fourth one, I didn't see the conformity on on the the cannabis retailer and distributor one. Am I missing it? Because it's, because number ten, like, if you go down the list, number ten is cannabis business permit application out of, out of city cannabis retailer and distributor. And then it has the cannabis, it has commercial cannabis business permit, application, financial responsibility, indemnity, just like the other ones have. But I don't see where it has the procedures and review criteria application, like the retailer one, and the laboratory one, and the event one. Am I missing it?
In terms of, there's, there's no, what I'm hearing, Dr. Barber, is that the you're wondering why there isn't a
Procedure.
Procedures on on that. We can, we can produce that. Maybe Kyle, could you talk a little bit more about that process for the out-of-city cannabis retailer and?
Yes. Yes, so the ordinance requires outside retailers and distributors who are licensed and permitted outside of the city of Monterey to 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 obtain a permit from the city of Monterey before they can deliver cannabis in to Monterey or distribute cannabis to the retailers that are currently, that or that will be operating in Monterey. So the ordinance did not establish detailed procedures for those businesses to apply. So essentially, the application form is 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 their procedures. Essentially, they fill out their information, they explain where they are located, they provide proof that they are locally permitted, that they have a state license, and then it's a very simple process, a small fee. City Monterey will issue them a permit so that they can deliver cannabis or distribute cannabis products to the four retailers that in one non-storefront retailer that will operate in Monterey.
So that's kind of concerning to me, even though, or should I say, is maybe misleading? Because how all the other ones are, have the methodical steps of the, you know, permit application, the procedures or review criteria application, then the financial responsibility, indemnity, and consent to inspection terms. And this one has everything but the procedure and review. Is there any way we can be able to? If you're, if you're, if I'm understanding, you're you correctly, you're saying it's in the out-of-city cannabis retailer and distributor's application, that procedure or review criteria, is that what I'm understanding?
I I believe that's, that's what Kyle, our consultant is stating, that it's such a straightforward process. The process is described in the application, and it's one of the reasons why the the fee is only seventy dollars, because it's very little, it's not as much staff time to to process and review.
So it's limited.
It's it's limited. If we we could create a cover sheet that provided the the process, but it'd be very brief, so it's included, it's integrated into the application, and folks can walk through the application to to understand, to understand it. But for clarity, we we could certainly provide a overview that describes the the process in addition to the application itself.
If I, if I may, I think part of the concern you're saying is, this seems like we're more heavily regulating storefront retailers, and it's an intensive review process. The reason we don't have the same codification of that in our ordinance is that out-of-city retailers are not going to have a storefront operating here, they're just going to be delivering, just delivering, and they're going to have to have a permit from the city in which they're based. So let's say you're operating in Seaside, you're going to have a Seaside cannabis permit from the city of Seaside, and you're also going to have a permit from the state of California. And so we didn't feel like we needed to, we, meaning that city council, and it adopted the ordinance, have this intensive background checks and all these other things other than a more minimal review, you get licensed, you're allowed to deliver in our city.
So I guess my question would be to the point of what chief was talking about, like, if you have some people who haven't done well in other cities, suppose if we don't do a background check, we don't know whether they're one of the ones who didn't do well in other cities who are coming in our city who are delivering? What happens with that?
So if I may, when I I read this and we talked about this and looked at it, as Chrissy has described, it's really important for those operators inside our city, and we can regulate them. People coming in to supply them, we want to be aware of who they are and what they're doing, but really, it comes back to that operator that they're delivering to. And quite frankly, I don't know that we could do all these things for somebody who's just delivering. We could, but it's going to take a whole lot of time. And if we're comfortable with the entities that are in our town that we can control, these other ones that are delivering, that entity that's in our city has a responsibility for them and for the product that they're having in their business. So I I think that's why there's a whole lot of work in all of this, and we have to be somewhat circumspect in in how much we're going to devote to different things, given different resources. And I'm comfortable with what the current setup is, and I think that the vendor, you know, I I said I had some experience with this, but we're also kind of looking at suggestions from the vendor, because they're doing this all over the state and and telling other folks best practices, and that was their idea as well, to help us get to where we are today.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, in keeping with the the same question, I understand the points about delivery, so I want to talk about the special events. So is there an application that is attached to the packet that is involving the special event applicants? Because it looks like this application only has the two check-offs. It's in, it's a storefront, or it's a a delivery application. What's the application look like for the event?
There is a temporary cannabis event permit application procedures, as well as an application. We we are have a, we have a draft version. We didn't, we intentionally didn't attach every, each of the twelve attachments to go into so much detail with council, but but we've, as it states in the ordinance, there are no more than two events, and they must be held at the, at the Monterey County Fairgrounds. And we we're happy to show you kind of what the draft looks like, if you're interested in diving into into that, but we intentionally didn't include it in the packet because the focus was, is on the retail operations.
And Councilmember, if I could direct your attention to section seven dash seven twenty-one, temporary cannabis events. When I went through this, there is some great language in here that helps us deal with any issues that are occurring. For example, number seven says that the city may require the event organizer and all participants to cease operations without delay. If in the opinion of the city or law enforcement, it is necessary to protect the immediate health and safety of the public, there's some really great language that's actually in the the code to help us deal with any issues that we might have that are temporary cannabis events. And I, I thought there are only two, did I have my number correct? That were allowed. But there's some really good language, I thought, surrounding that.
So so what I hear you saying is that the staff is still going to be working on that process? Or you have to finalize the draft?
We're finalizing the draft. We have a draft. I'll show you, I'll show you the, I'm happy to share the screen right now, and this is again, a draft version, so just
Well, actually, I want to stop you there. I don't, unless other council members want to see the draft
Yeah.
Application, I would say, if it's in draft form, you're still working on it, so.
It'll be finalized, it will be consistent with the the ordinance. It contains information such as, what's the business formation? Do they need to make sure they have the signed financial responsibility, indemnity? The copy of the, the, you know, we talked about the hard copy of the business cannabis business license tax registration certificate, supporting information, owner information. So those are all parts of the application we ask for ownership. Those types of items.
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is that it, you know, internally, it makes sense for them to kind of look the same. Obviously, you know, so it's touchdown, it's staff time. The question I have is for the event applicant, where is that application start with? Does that go through planning for a use permit, or is that part of the security plan that goes through the police department? for a use permit? Or is that part of the security plan that goes through the police department for the event at the fairgrounds? So is it go to planning or is it go to police department?
All, all the, the planning division is the intake for all of the cannabis applications regard whether it's a cannabis event that's held at the fairgrounds or whether it's a a retail operator, they're, they're the lead department. At the end of the day, however, there is a review process with police and, and, and of course, the event needs to be approved by the, the fairgrounds because it is being held on, on fairgrounds. It seems like you has to comment.
Yeah, it's, it's in the ordinance under seven, seven twenty one. So where we lay out what it is, the forms is what Ned is talking about, we are developing, but the cannabis ordinance addresses the temporary cannabis, temporary cannabis event.
Okay. So it's a one stop at the planning is the start. Applicants, all, all the applicants go to the planning for application.
That's correct.
Thank you. Um. So I can't remember what phase it was, maybe phase three, we, we will have the top eight that go to the committee. And then from there, the top four is recommended, but the, will the council? Actually, no, hold on, before I get to that question. Are, are we going to, so once we get to the top four, are we going to hold on to those other ones? Are we dropping them completely? So for whatever reason, if we have those four, we'll be able to tap into that. I think there was somewhat of a conversation on that earlier, I just kind of wanted to clarify. Is that going to be part of what goes in front of the council in the, in the ranking?
So the question is, when the, when the council select committee comes forward with their top four, can the council throw this all out and reshuffle from the eight that were if we have a going forward?
The, the council has, has final say. So I mean, if, if council also chooses, if I'm understanding that question correctly, council can override the selection committee's recommendation or provide a, a different order in terms of council's ranking. So that's
So, so the, the idea was to give the mayor and the vice mayor together with staff an opportunity to dive deeper into the application process. But at the end, and you recall, we discussed that item also when we discussed application, it was my, my suggestion at that time that at the end, I want to be sure that all five council members have a chance to put the their mark onto that selection process. So while, while it is sincerely my hope that the mayor and the vice mayor's recommendation will make it easier for the council. But as you know, when we give a staff recommendation and the council comes up with a very interesting spin, the staff recommendation is out of the window and, and, and we follow the, the new suggestion or the idea, this can very well happen. But again, at the end of that, as, as Ned pointed out, it will be the call, the, all the council's decision. So what you're doing mayor and vice mayor Barbara at that time will have a strong recommendation, i.e. when you appoint people to, to commissions and boards. But at the end, all five of you need to agree. All four of you.
And so just to clarify, the council will receive all of the top eight in that agenda report. Okay. And then I, my assumption in regards to, so once we had the top four, what I recall from the conversation was that the top one would be able to choose the district first and then it would go to two. But now what I'm hearing is an idea of a lottery. So I just, is that the, the, the prior thought that I had, maybe I, I read the room wrong or misunderstood the conversation. But is that an option for us as opposed to a lottery? Does anything prevent us from saying, hey, we ranked the top four, there's number one, number two, number three, number four, so we'll let number one choose where they go first, then we let number two choose as opposed to saying there's a top four and now all of a sudden, it doesn't matter if you're one or four, the lottery is essentially choosing for you.
You could do it that way.
And, and here's why, here's why I think that that is, is an absolutely appropriate way, but dangerous. Because now the four applicants will line up and will, will try to sell you why they should have more points here and there, and you go into in, in kind of a spiral there. So I'm just saying that there is, there is a certain randomness in that. I freely admit this with a lottery. But the other part will be that now you will have a lot of different sales tactics applied, why we made mistakes, why you erred in your ranking or whatever, and why somebody else should, should be looked at that. And again, we were dealing with a group that is very much experienced and litigious also to a certain degree, that's always a danger in this. And so the more randomness you have in there, I think the, the, the easier it is to defend later in court.
That's helpful. I, I think part of and I'm, I'm going back to what the police chief was saying earlier in just regards to making sure that we find the best applicants. If, let's say somebody is ranked number one and they happen to be the fourth person selected in this randomization of the lottery, we might have, and they're not interested in doing it on North Fremont, right? They maybe just lost the best app. So I'm, I'm just, I, I hear it and I, I guess I'm interested in having that further debate.
I, I just want to throw this out there. When, when Gina was talking about this, what we struggle with, what staff has struggled with is what if you have two that want the same one? That's the issue. Gina looked at it the other way, or if it's one, two, three, but if you had two or three that want the same one, that's where it becomes hard because now are they going to do things to set themselves up? So now if you guys have scored one higher than the other and it's not random, then they're going to argue with the fact that well, you scored them here and it should have been me because they both want that same location and it wasn't fair the way you scored us. Whereas if it's a lottery, it's just random based on those top four. That's what staff has struggled with, with this, this is a hard part to figure out because this is where a lot of argument will come from. And so if you have a lottery, then it, it's, it's not necessarily on you and how you scored.
Totally. Okay. No, that's helpful. Thank you for that. I, I, I can't remember how we did this before, but the non storefront permit, that can be in any of the districts. So they're potentially in one of the districts that have been identified out of the four that non storefront can operate out of those. So they're essentially in the end, if we issue permits, if we issue all the permits, there will be one district that has two cannabis businesses. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. And then and then is it possible for us to look at potentially make, changing the scoring in some way? And, and just to give an example of kind of where my, my mind is at, I, I wonder how the council feels around the idea of potentially giving a little bit more weight to the local enterprise and engagement plan. I think to me that weighs heavy and, and it is stronger out of some of the categories and the others. So I'm not going to lose sleep over if, if the council wants to keep it the same, but I also want to be able to put more emphasis in, in regards to an area that I think is critical.
Can you put the slide up again, please? Yes, you're right. We, we put more points into that because of feedback we got from council, but we can take absolutely a look.
Here's what is being proposed right now and the scoring.
So, but it's possible for us to alter that a little bit.
That, there's a possibility, yes, to reallocate points.
Okay. And is the idea to keep it at two hundred max or does that?
It would be more simple to keep it at two hundred max.
Okay. So maybe we can loop back around to that once we get to council discussion and then if there's no other questions from the council at this time, Councilmember Hoffa?
A follow up question to something that you were, you had brought up. So with respect to kind of the selection process and you know, staff mentioned there's sometimes litigation around this. Have there been cities that have, that have been found liable for their choices of, you know, who they give a permit to based on, you know, the process?
I know there's been litigation. I haven't checked in recent times. I think there's been enough exposure to this field where I think we're going with the best practices to get something up and running and not have litigation if at all possible. So I think our, our intention is to have a fair process that's not tainted by outside influences and
Because I can, I mean, I can see how a lottery would, would protect us from some of that litigation. I'm just trying to weigh in my mind how serious the litigation risk is because I do also hear some of the other.
I, I think it's because it's, it's these businesses are very lucrative. And so to lose out on the opportunity or they were, I, I guess there's different opinions on that now, right? That back in the day, if you didn't get a spot, that was upsetting. And so then some cities said, you know, it's best to just do first come, first serve. It's best to just not limit the number and let there be a proliferation and let the market decide. So there's been different approaches based on litigation. And of course, there's never a foolproof solid way to do it without having some exposure, but I think we've put together council's policy wishes with adequate protections to defend litigation if there is any.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we, we, I think also our process that, that we are following for two years now has tried to avoid pitfalls that other cities have done where they just sat down with a vendor and started talking about ideas prior to issuing RFP. And then in the end, you had the, the challenge to do that, or you hired a consultant who later and hired him maybe even as a staff member to find out that this person was working as a quiet partner somewhere else. So those cases have, have been around up and down the state. And so we kept that process clear from that, but it is, it is, in my opinion, if we make any any mistakes, it can, it, it can be difficult to, to work them, work out of them.
Okay, Councilmember Brubber?
So still staying on that same line, would it be helpful? And it may not, I'm just asking in, in conversations. Would it be helpful to continue to have how you have for the selection process, but that in the application process itself that they can collect their choice of choice one, two, three and four? Meaning that even though I may not get choice one, choice three is okay for me, you know, but that way they're ranking it themselves. So kind of and then however it ends up, at least you have those choices that were in the application. Just, just my, my two cents.
So at, at the end, when the city of Seaside decided to go forward with that, and I don't know if you were part of that process at that time, they, they originally allowed three in the city of Seaside, but they had eight, nine applications. And the council, when, when they looked at those applications at that time said, hey, why don't you guys sit down with each other and figure out if you can partner with each other? And they, they sent it back and, and gave another opportunity to that. So there was part of that to, to figure out, hey, if you want not that, maybe there is something. So there's still that option out there. And then at, at the very end, the, the council of, of Seaside said, well, if you cannot make up your mind instead of three, we approve now six. So that's not something I propose for our city, but what, what I'm saying is there is still some, some, some leverage, Dr. Barber, that, 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 that you could exercise.
Okay. All right. With that, let's take it out to public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Okay, we have one. Anybody online? I'm going to give a countdown to use the raise hand function. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, we'll go ahead and close it. And we, we do have one on Zoom, one in the chamber. So we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Okay, I'm going to go off my prepared remarks just because I want to say a few things about what was discussed tonight. So first off, the security plan without the location, that's going to be really tough. Like as somebody who's going to be applying, we want to provide you guys a really strong security plan without actually proposing the location. I can't really define that, right? The square footage, does it have a parking lot? Does it not have a parking lot? These are all things that I think are really important. So hopefully we had the opportunities applicants to submit our location. I think it can weigh very heavily into your decision-making process when it comes to, to the final process. And then it makes it really difficult to, to find a space. Once we've gone through this process, if we don't consider location at first, if you just do a lottery basis system, it's going to be very difficult for us to go and secure a location. If we happen to get a location that we don't want, to your point, I've lived in Monterey for fifteen years, I want New Monterey. If we don't get New Monterey, I have to go find somebody who's going to rent me a building. They're going to have way too much control. That person may have one of the few green zone buildings left. So that final zone, that landlord will have a lot of control over how much they can charge that individual applicant. So give that some thought as well. Again, I ask that you guys do consider something where we can submit the property along with the application and make that part of our, our total application and, and for review. But again, thank you. I know local ownership was included in this. I think that's a really important part. All of these national, so my day job, I work for, for actually the number one edible brand in California. I worked for them for quite some time and I do business with over three hundred and fifty retailers in the state of California. So I know all of the retailers and many of them are going to apply for this license in Monterey. They're going to partner with people like me to try to move forward. But it's important that you don't just choose local operators and, and owners that are just tokens, but people who are actually going to roll their sleeve up, get into the actual business and help run it. That's I think an important aspect too, when you consider the local element. It's the local owners and operators. You want people that are going to really roll their sleeves up, really take into consideration the, the, the meaning of our community, the value of our community, the the things that we value and put them into play when it comes to the actual retail store. So thank you guys for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, let's stick it online.
Hang on, Joey?
Thank you. Good evening to the council. This is Joey Espinoza. I, I wanted to piggyback the comment on the security plan. I think I, I, I like what, I like what the city is trying to do as far as the equity aspect of that and giving people an opportunity to apply regardless if they have a location. I think the intention of that is, is well founded and, and it's a good idea. I just do think it's going to be interesting when you're trying to secure a security plan without having any bearing of the location whatsoever. I've never seen that done before. A lot of times your security plan is, is fully based on your location and that's kind of how you develop it. So to have a security plan, that's not really going to have a floor plan showing a layout of egress, ingress, camera location. It would be difficult for me to score that. So whoever's scoring that, good luck to you on that. It's, it's going to be hard for them to kind of be set apart from each other because everybody can kind of say the same things and we're going to have cameras, we're going to have alarm systems. So that's, that's going to be the most interesting aspect to me. And given that that's forty points of the application, you know, that's a big chunk of it. So something for the council to, to consider when we're looking at all of this. The other question or comment, I, I guess it's a question. When it comes to the locations, I don't know if this was a different agenda item that I saw throughout agendas and I missed it in a meeting, so I could be confusing myself. Staff, let me know if I am. Was it, was there a process for properties to be entered into some sort of inventory and, and then if you win a license, you get to kind of choose between the properties or is it just if you, if you end up winning a license, you go out and find the property? I wasn't sure if there's going to be like a a way to kind of enter a property into the potential of being rented out, or if that's just something between the landowner and the the applicant. But other than that, I think it's pretty well done. I appreciate the staff's time putting it together. I think I, you know, worked with a lot of cities in, in this process before, and I think Monterey has done a pretty good job at sticking to your timelines and making sure that the community is involved and making sure that the process is laid out. So thank you for all of that. And I look forward to seeing how this, how this goes.
Perfect. And with that, we will close public comment and I'll start with that last part of Joey's and my assumption is it's the latter part of what he was saying, which is you have to find the property as opposed to it. So I'm, I'm just checking with staff just to verify that my facts on that are correct. Okay, I'm getting a head nod. So yeah, you will have to find your own property after the permit is issued. And then to get to the other question, I, I was thinking about this too. And I'm wondering, I'm not sure if the consultant is best to answer the question in regards to the security plan. But it might be helpful to have some kind of explanation around how best is that assessed if there's not a site specified.
Or actually, our chief will start.
So my thought on that is that operators who, who are doing this, there, there are some basic things that we want in the security plan somewhere laid out in the code. But certainly part of this exercise is to see what they come up with. And it doesn't mean that if they give us a security plan and then they secure a location that we're not going to say, okay, now that you have your specific location, now apply what you had originally to that location. You can still come up with the things that you need to do. So if I'm entering a security plan, I would make it like I have different issues, the building, the parking lot, whatever, and put those things into what a security plan would look like when I find my location. And then when I have the location, we as the city will when I find my location. And then when I have the location, we as the city will require them to apply that now to the exact diagram of that location.
Okay, so I, if I were to find a different way of interpreting what you just said, I take that as it's an opportunity for us to show that the applicant has intent around thinking through this a little bit more. Not something super specific to a site, but just kind of the, the intentionality around the security aspect.
Yes, and and I, I, I don't think this is giving anything up. And I've all talked about this, but part of this too is to see what the people are going to put into this application, right? So it's kind of like a, an assignment. This is your assignment. We want to see what we get back, just like when we're hiring somebody or something. What does their resume look like? What are these things when you look at the whole package look like for that vendor to evaluate? And it doesn't have to have a very specific site.
Okay. Yeah, it's a commitment. It's a commitment essentially to follow a certain level of security or what have you, you know, it's even with the employment. I mean, they, they're essentially, they're not hiring folks yet, but
There's an intentionality.
Whether you have a location or not, it's, it's, it's their intentionality to it.
Okay, thank you both for that. Bringing it back to the council for motion deliberation. Who wants to start us off? Councilmember Hoffa, I see you, you're burning.
You know, there are lots of things we could do. We could change this in lots of ways. And I, I mean, I understand the comments from the public. But I kind of feel like our staff have looked at this a lot. And I, I feel like we should just go forward pretty much with what the staff have recommended. That's my gut feeling. So I'll make that motion. We'll get it on the table. We can talk about it, but I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
It's, it's actually just informational update. So motion or vote required. Yeah, we're just getting feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, well then, yeah. Well, in that case, I'd like to change.
Well, in that case, you want to hear my opinion.
All right, next item.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the comments about, about the location. I go back and forth. There's something about a lottery and chance and it is the most fair that I like. But I also do worry about the point you brought up, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, we may have the best applicant end up getting the worst location or what they perceive to be the worst location and we lose them. So I, I don't know. It's a, it's a tough one. And I, I don't know what other way, what else we could do to try to address equity because, I mean, I, I understand the staff's objective in, 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 you know, going that route. But so I don't have the solution.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm sensitive. I mean, you know that I don't support it, but I'm sensitive to protecting the integrity of the council and the, the ad hoc subcommittee in that I would hate to see the mayor and a vice mayor as we go forward in years to come that are getting leaned on and there's too much, you know, attempts to bargain and attempts to advocate. And I think the lottery, it keeps us as council a, a little bit away from the minutia of this. Now, certainly we still have the final vote collectively when the council comes together. But I'm just sensitive to those two that are working with the city manager or the destiny and not allowing it to get to a point where there is the behind the scenes advocacy where, you know, they're trying to lean in favor and get, get you to, to lean one way or the other. And I think the lottery and most things is the fairest approach for most of the experiences, given that everything is even and equal at the beginning. And everyone has the same access at the same time. And the score sheet is the same for all applicants. I think the lottery is the most fair and I think it protects the council members.
Anybody else? All right. Well, I, I'll end it by just giving a lot of appreciation to staff. I know how much time you all put into this and how many different departments have been involved. And, and I'm, I'm in agreement. I mean, I, I was alluding to an idea, just kind of the feedback that I was hearing from the police chief earlier, but there, I, I, there's nothing that I'm, I'm agreeable to the process that staff has spent a lot of time on coming up with. So just want to give kudos to you all. This isn't an easy process. There's a lot of different ways that we can do this as, has been discussed. And so it looks like a good process. I appreciate all the time that's been put into this. All right, with that, we will move to item number 12, our last item on the agenda, except council comments and city manager report. Number 12 master fee schedule update fees for community development department by adding cannabis retail application fees and rental inventory fees effective January 5th, 2024. With that, I'll pass to Hans for staff presentation.
And, and Councilmember Hoffa, you, you can make a motion.
This one.
So thank you so much. So this is implementing, we already introduced to you the, the part of the cannabis application fees. We also propose a rental inventory application fee and I believe Nat, is it right Nat? You, you have a few slides on this one as well.
I, I do, and thank you, Hans, and appreciate your patience while we hide the floating meeting controls. There's, what you don't see is huh? Yep. Okay. So what was that, Mr. City Manager? Update to the master fee schedule, adding cannabis retail application fees and the rental inventory fees as well. I will keep this, keep this as brief as possible. A recommendation to you, we like to start off with a recommendation is that the city council tonight adopt a resolution that amends and restates the resolution 23-036. This is the master fee schedule to update fees for community development department by adding the cannabis retail application fees. I went through some of that earlier in the previous presentation and rental inventory fees effective January 4th, 2024. So the background on this is that on November 21st, the commercial cannabis ordinance was passed and, and introduced an ordinance, council introduced an ordinance to fully recover the cost of administering both the cannabis business ordinance as well as the rental inventory ordinance. And tonight, council adopted the second reading of the ordinance to fully cover the cost of administering both cannabis business ordinance and the rental inventory ordinance. So we have before you the master fee schedule update. So the proposed cannabis fees, this is based on an analysis for 100% cost recovery of staff and consultant time direct costs relating to cannabis implementation. There is the retail application fee and that totals 9,045 with all of the phases with 44,845 dollars to upfront for phases one and two. Background check fee, $300 do upfront, the testing lab fee, the temporary event application fee, out of CD distribution application fee, the annual compliance fee, audit fee and cannabis business permit application renewal fee as well as a zone clearance. So all the fees are listed here as well as in the attachment before you, all of these fees are within the community development departments, department fee section. The proposed rental registry fees also within community development is proposed to be $50 per unit. This is calculated based on fully burden rates for the the HCD coordinator as well as the administrative assistant in the housing office and as well as software and travel slash meetings for a total of $365,000 divided by the estimated applicable units. And this is a calculation that is based on the total units minus an estimated 10% knowing that there are some exemptions in the number of rental units that must that are required to register as part of the rental registry program. So this is the recommendation before you tonight, the packet before you has more detailed information. If you have any questions, we're here to answer questions from you.
Hey, council, any questions? All right, let's take out to the public. Anybody online? There's nobody in the chamber. I'm going to do a countdown, five, four, three, two, one. All right, we have one and we'll close the opportunity for folks to speak during public comment and we'll go to that one speaker.
So I'll call in Joey.
Thank you. I think that's where I got confused. I saw that rental inventory fee with cannabis and I was wondering what that was about. So that I guess they're just two different things that you guys are approving together. My question was for these phases on the cost recovery attachment. I saw your slide said that half, half of that is due upfront. I just want to be clear for myself. So the phase process, the intention is that you apply and then if you don't make it to the next phase, you don't pay the next fee. I'm, I'm just want to clarify that. And then I want to also see that I see it's color coordinated on your attachment. So I'm assuming the baby blue is the application fees. And then the bottom where we're talking about the compliance fees, cannabis audit. I'm thinking those are things that would be due if, you know, if you want a permit, those are just fees that would be coming up throughout the process of that, that permit. Thank you.
Okay. Bring it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes for one. With that, we will go to council comments. Anybody? Councilmember Hoffa?
Yeah, I had a great time attending the Cannery Row tree lighting ceremony. It was a wonderful, well, well attended. And then also, you know, the city's downtown Colton Hall tree lighting was great. And then I just wanted to address an issue of undergrounding. I think there was a, in, in our Friday update from the city manager, there was some correspondence from the neighborhood association presidents on that topic. And I do think it's something we should look into in terms of, you know, seeing if there's a way to, to make it work financially. Maybe that would involve some kind of a bond that would be then paid back by property owners. But I, I, I do think that there's value in looking at it from the point of view of fire prevention as well as electric grid security. We've just, you know, it's, we've had so many issues over the last few years, not even just in winter with storms knocking trees down, taking out our power. So I, I do think it's something we, we should look at as a long-term, as a long-term goal and just wanted to put that on the table.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Smith?
Okay. Yeah. Okay, you got a whole list, I'm sure. Just, you know, this is the time where we spend a lot of time reflecting, you know, about where we are with our family or friends. And when we look back in reflections of 2023. Although this council hasn't, you know, always agreed, I think we can proudly look back and say that 2023 has been a a filled, active, very productive council and very much supported by our staff. So just putting together some thoughts, you know, we reflect on that a little bit further as 2023 winds down. But we know, and you all know, this is party season, holiday parties galore. So as with many of you, the Cannery Row tree lighting, November 24th was fantastic and Santa Claus was there. And as long as, along with the mayor in, in a joke. I'm
It was a good joke, by the way. I don't think Santa Claus laughed.
Yeah, Santa Claus is still checking. Sorry, I missed this last Friday with the old Monterey Business Association where I serve on the board and liaise on for this council, but sorry, I missed it. I was out of town. Missed the, the tree lighting. And again, I, I missed the joke, whatever it was.
It was a good one.
Mayor delivered. Tomorrow in Salinas, I have a board meeting for the Transportation Authority of Monterey County. Tomorrow is the early, early meeting. So for the audience that might be watching now, that's normally the last Wednesday of every month. Because of the holidays, it's moved up to tomorrow, December 6th. So you can tune in to watch Tamsi if you so choose. Also, next Monday is the MST board meeting. And also a few, few activities. And Friday, looking forward to the Monterey County Convention of Israel's Bureau, now known as C Monterey. So I think we should update our list that we voted on tonight for assignments and start looking at the new name of Monterey County Convention of Israel's Bureau is now known as C Monterey, S E E Monterey. So that meeting is Friday. I think it starts at like 9:30, goes till three. And that's a board of directors workshop and luncheon. So full, full calendar, the next couple of weeks, just like everybody else. And I guess we're going to see each other again on the 15th with a special meeting. So happy season, everybody.
Okay, real quick update on Monterey One Water. So two phases of the expansion project. The first phase is the actual expansion of the advanced water purification facility, which is estimated to be complete. A substantial completion in May of 2025. And then the second portion is the injection well, phase four. And that has first injection scheduled for August 25th of 2025. So quick update there. And then in regards to the base project for pure water Monterey, we have delivered 4.1 billion gallons of water. Said in a different way, that's 12,600 acre feet since construction. So just a little bit of a great milestone to celebrate. Update there. And then spinning off of Councilmember Smith's comments, this is our last council meeting of the year. I think we're going to be canceling the 19 December council meeting.
We're, we're the 15th.
Right, but that's a special meeting. So there's no more regularly scheduled meetings for the year. And, and so just kind of as I reflect on the year, the thing that, the thing that I think of is unity. I think that, you know, as Councilmember Smith had alluded to, you know, we come from different positions. And it's just our ability in this community, which is diverse and diverse in people, diverse in thought, diverse in experience and background. And I just have to say how much I appreciate working with all of you as my colleagues. And the staff that's been tremendous in supporting us and achieving what has been a productive year. So I just want to be able to say how much I appreciate being the mayor in Monterey and being able to work with each and every one of you. And that includes all of you out there in the community. Nobody's really in the chamber except for staff. So for those that are online watching, we just want to share how much we appreciate you and wishing everybody happy holidays. And with that, I will pass it to Hans for city manager report.
I, I tried to be sensitively leading back to the list of things that I wanted to share with you, but thank you for all the good work the council has done. And thank you for, for your acknowledgement of everyone who made, made this all happen. Thank you for that. Our bookmobile is finished building in Ohio and a team of our city will fly there and check it all out and test it and give it its final approval before it comes to Monterey. The special meeting that was mentioned just a moment ago by the mayor will be on 12:15 at 2:00 PM. And tomorrow night, please, I know you haven't forgotten, but I just want to say tomorrow night, there's also an opportunity to meet all the boards and commission members that bring forward a lot of the good work that we then hear final. And so tomorrow is the board and commission reception on top of the Marriott in the front room, starting, I believe, Nat at five o'clock or 5:30. Anyway. Yeah. So if you're there at five, it's probably already
crap. Start drinking.
The crab cakes already there.
Five.
I have We have a five, 5:30.
5:30. It starts at 5:30. And last but not least, again, yes, thank you for, for all your attending the tree lighting ceremony. I think this was a huge succession. As I pointed out to, to you that evening, this was the largest crowd I personally have seen being assembled at, at 5:15, 5:20, and they ran out of cookies and cider. And so it was a great tree lighting ceremony. Compliments to First Night and Peter Foresi from OMBA. And also to our team that helped support that event.
Awesome. All right. Go do great things, everybody. Meetings adjourned. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.